At six o'clock, I'm going to call this meeting to order. Welcome, everyone. This meeting is being recorded using all technology and will be available on the city's YouTube channel in a couple of days after the meeting is over. So we'll move on and start with a roll call. Please state your name.
Mary Maynard.
Thank you. We'll move on to the consent agenda.
Yeah, time to review the consent agenda. If so, I'll need a motion to approve. Second, on favor?
I.
Any names? Thank you. Move on to number five. Reports. And please notice that we're doing something different now. All department heads are providing written reports. This will hopefully streamline our meetings while providing consistent and valuable information. Council, if you have any questions of the department as I go down the list and just name them, be sure to mention you have a question and we'll have anyone on the podium to respond. So we'll start with the sheriff's report. I believe it's in the packet. Okay, library report in the packet and questions for Kathy. Our department's in the packet. Building Department. Maintenance. Water wastewater. Parks and Rec. Here's a new one, City Hall. And the mayor's report. And engineering. Did you have any questions on Shane's report? Okay, thank you. We'll move on to number six. This evening, we're very privileged to have with us Mount Vernon's mayor, Tom Riesler, and Ely City Administrator, Elvin Miller. They're going to first share how the mayor and city administration administrator position works in their community, and then I'll open it up for council questions. Mayor Riesler and Elvin, approach the podium, please, and Mayor Riesler, if you'd like to start.
Sure. Good evening, and thanks for the invitation, and I appreciate working with your mayor and different things through the 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 last two months and so on, and for the opportunity to help support you here. I don't have any really prepared comments or anything like that, but I did want to mention that just with my second to your term in Mount Vernon, so I'm the mayor of our store, two years and two months practically. For that, I was a city council member for six years. And I came on when I'm current city manager. I was first elected city councilor at the same time that we changed transitioned city manager. So I don't know of any other type of city operation other than city manager like we have now. And Christian official is our city manager, and he was recently selected at the last league of cities convention as the city manager of the year, so proud of that. I did have some experience in Mount Vernon as an elected official on the school board, being on twenty seven years of the school board, ten years as president. So I've gone through election cycles. My fourteenth was the last one, so. But all during that time, I had a good relationship with the city and the city manager. We have, and as I'm looking at your agenda, we do two meetings a month, first and third Mondays of the month, and have a good relationship with Chris in that he sends out Friday notes to us as council members and mayor about what's been happening, what's been going on with the city departments and things like that. Our agenda is pretty similar to yours, other than it's probably, we have probably shorter meetings just because we have two a month versus yours. You're one month. I did make a point about between every two weeks of meetings, trying to stop in at City Hall to touch base usually with Chris on using questions that I have, you know, what's going on in this development or what's going on in that development. It's not, we're obviously not deliberating or anything like that, but we just touched in touch base with City Hall. I don't know what your relationship is or what your hours expectation is here, but I'm pretty fortunate that I don't need any, I don't have any office hours per se, but I do like stopping in City Hall at least once a week with a planned set of questions. I come in and I'm not, it's not, it's actually after two hours that burn up his time. These are, you know, six or seven concise questions that I have for him and and they're very beneficial, and it helps me run the next meeting better with that background information, so. That's kind of the, what I know about city manager, this is, I'm very supportive of that type of reality. Some things that we may have that are different than you and or even Ely for that matter is that we have a, with the college on campus, that's eleven hundred residents that are, maybe it will hide more higher maintenance as it comes to police protection and so on. And we've got eight FTEs in our police department, I think, and you shared sheriff's department time there, so we have a little more labor there and involvement with with the police department. And that's just the way it's always been in my department, so. I'm anxious to hear what other questions or comments you have, but I guess we'll let Elvin talk about his comments at this point.
Yeah, we'll let Elvin speak first, and then we'll open with your question.
Great, that sounds good, right.
Thank you.
I've been around city meetings for eight years. I see the sheriff's department here. We can work them in if you want.
Okay, you want to go ahead, Chris. Thanks, Alvin.
Thanks, appreciate it. I'm definitely telling the sheriff's office. This report is from January seventeen through February thirteen. During that time, I had forty six calls for service. The two that kind of jump out are only one fraud call and that kind of vehicle, but other than that, it's pretty normal stuff, truck stops and whatnot. A lot of them, month of January hours than that as well. Should I have any questions, comments, who's next?
Counsel? No, thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, for inviting me to participate tonight. I'm in a little bit of a unique situation in the city of Ely. I was serving my second term as mayor, I served as mayor there elected in twenty fifteen. So I was on the side of you right now deciding whether the city of Ely should add a city administrator role. Then through the process, an opportunity opened up, and I actually applied and accepted the role just this past October. So I'm in my fourth month as city administrator for our town, so I've seen this dynamic from both ways. I often think coming from Ely, we have very, very similar dynamics to Fairfax. Our proximity to Cedar Rapids, the growth we're seeing, the age of our residents, and the type of dynamics we're trying to see our city move to the next step, so. Once again, I sat in your chair back in twenty seventeen and deliberated, deliberated the same question. We had hired Denise Hoy as our city clerk. She was a veteran of the industry. Shortly into our time in her new role, she recognized her inability to fully address developments, the future growth, the infrastructure needs, and the economic development that our community needed at that time. All of her time was spent in reactionary mode as she tried to also handle the clerk duties. For a growing community like ours, there was a need for a role that could help lead the community forward rather than react to everything that came on its plate. In the four years since adding the administrator role in Ely, we've become more forward-thinking, planning for growth in a responsible manner. Development of a new capital improvement plan, updating our comp plan and zoning code, fringe area agreement within county, and currently working on an annexation agreement with Cedar Rapids, which is a few things this role has done. The role also manages all infrastructure projects and economic development. The city still utilizes engineering services. However, this role has helped to greatly reduce the level of dependency for day-to-day activities on engineers. The admin role also spends a fortune of time dedicating to dealing with negotiations and also securing state and federal grants to help fund projects and take some of that financial burden off of taxpayers. Lastly, this role helps provide overall leadership for staff and works to continuously improve methods of communication with residents. It is difficult to imagine Ely being in the position it is in today without the addition of this role we added a few years back. So with that, I will gladly take questions. Also, sir.
Does council have questions for Tom or Elvin?
I have a question. So you were mayor, now you're the admin.
Yeah.
And you've had a clerk, so I'm assuming you still have one, so what duties, so how did you define the duties or separate the duties then, when you?
That's a good question, and the answer is it's a little bit different for every city admin and every clerk. You guys have a very strong city clerk, a very experienced city clerk. And I'll be honest, from a city perspective, that helps to mask some of the need. But at some point, when you fill that role again, and you don't have quite that that experience, you're going to start to see more things that's maybe being covered for your city administrator that currently is being done by your city clerk. Same with your mayor. I knew Bernie as well, too, and saw him in meetings. I'll be honest, I was working a full-time role at my current job and being mayor. I was putting in maybe ten hours a week on top of my full-time job, and everybody thought immediately I was really over, overworking the position, right, and really being involved because it's a part-time role. And I think right now with what I'm seeing from a distance at Fairfax is you guys are getting some crossover with some mayors who put in a lot of time and a very experienced city clerk that's helping to mask a little bit of that middle part that a city administrator would do. So the answer is, right now with my city clerk, she's our finance person. She handles budget, she oversees anything financially related, and then I handle more the administrator side, the project side, and the planning side.
Tom, could you maybe elaborate on that same question in Mount Vernon?
Repeat the question again.
The role that your city clerk plays in Mount Vernon.
We have, like I mentioned, Chris is now the city manager. We recently added a second person to that office with assistant city manager, and this is an engineer that we got from H and K in Cedar Rapids, I think, and another engineering firm. We when I first became mayor, we put our P's out for a lot of major, a lot of our services, garbage service, audit firm, our city attorney and things like that, and changed probably half of those. And that was a conscious decision that Chris and I made that we wanted to, with the marketplace and all, that the new show and now we want to make everybody a little bit more on the toes and so on. We, Chris was not an engineer, and the city of Mount Vernon did have an engineer on staff previously, and and we also, our previous administration had city attorney at all the meetings, and I don't know what you do here, but we made a conscious decision to not have to have the city attorney at every meeting, and and also to change engineering firms to have one that's a little more proactive and to save a little bit on the expenses of them being at every council meeting as well, so. We just looked at a lot of different things and about what are we going to do differently and so on, and and in the area of doing things differently, we, when I recently came on board, we also took over the police enforcement, law enforcement over Lisbon, so we do police enforcement in Mount Vernon and Lisbon, part of that eight FTEs at the department. And recently signed a twenty eighty with West Branch, this kind of mutual aid with police protection. You have it for fire and for ambulance and things like that, but what ran through the situation, I mean, I got an email from the mayor there that they're alleging two officers with their chief, like January first or something like that, they had a month to react, and they got out recruited by, I think, Johnson County on all those positions there, so. We offered to set up a twenty eighty to assist outside of our rural borders to different city limits, different ordinances, different county, so. But that's something we wanted to do, and we're going.
Thank you. Any other questions?
How long have you guys, has Mount Vernon had a city administrator?
I've been there since eighty-two, and we've had two other long-term city administrators.
So you've had an administrator.
Yeah, yeah, so that's why, I won't kid you, I don't know any, any contrasting style.
I know any other way.
But you're right, yeah, and and I knew Don Segals who was doing it for many, many years, and then Frank Jones, I can't remember right now, but he's been a career twenty plus years there probably. So.
And as far as experience, what, when you've been there since eighty-two, you've probably seen a lot of administrator, I don't know how many administrators have come and gone in Mount Vernon, but what kind of experience did you see that they had, what's necessary, what, what do you look for, or have you looked for in an administrative?
First one I worked for was probably a glorified clerk, to be honest with you. I was on Park Street back then and did a lot of dealing with him with labor hours and programs and things like that, so finances, like. But he was probably more glorified city clerk. The second one was a graduate, he had some some program experience in college level, and I'm not sure what certifications all were at that time for Mike Myer, but he was in that role for twenty years, and then just in the last eight, when I got, I was elected in November, and I think we did interviews for what ended up being Chris's job in that December, eight years ago, I guess it is now. The level of expertise that, right, is a lot higher than what, you know, the first one, Chris was in Mount Vernon. I mean, Chris has extra experience at Indian Hole with agencies in Nebraska and Tipton, I think I missed another town or somewhere, but he was a project engineer. A little more economic development. He's not a certified engineer, but he's able to talk the talk with developers when it comes to whether it's residential or commercial development, so the level of expertise has gone up considerably, and he's, he's involved with I actually with the league, he's involved with ECAC here at a local level, so he's engaged outside of, outside of the community.
So he's been there, what, what did you say, eight years?
Been six years as council, two as mayor, so he's been there eight years, basically.
Eight years as a city administrator.
Yeah.
Okay. With other knowledge outside of, you mentioned.
Yeah, he came with a resume of three or four positions ahead of time. We had the, you know, the come to Jesus meeting every time the mayor election comes up to say, you know, Chris is the youngest kid, is a sixth grader, and I'm very cognizant of that, so. I've gone through superintendent searches, I've gone through city manager searches, and I don't feel happy or angry, so. This kid's got to stay, she's going to stay there till twelfth grade. I've got eight more years, seven more years, whatever it is, so hang in there, Chris, but it is a it's an interesting dynamics, mayor and, well, with council, but also mayor with city manager. I went through that with superintendent, and I hired three superintendents and pardon me, one of them, that wasn't really that pretty, but a tough, tough conversation happened, sure.
Sure, so what you're saying is, it was hard to find someone that fit for Mount Vernon, and now you maybe have one?
We have one, I can answer that part. I was not involved with the search process, I was involved with the interview process, but that was already culled down to four candidates at that time, but but they were pretty strong candidates. Were supervisors.
Now, Lick, could you maybe speak to that kind of question?
Yeah. I'm going to be flat out honest, Fairfax and Ely are not Mount Vernon. What I mean by that is, with Mount Vernon's size and the college and their ability to pay a higher rate, they're going to get somebody with a higher level of experience. If Fairfax decides to go through with it, I'll gladly sit down with Council and explain our growing pains of hiring a city administrator. Because when we first hired him, we thought we had to have somebody with a ton of experience, but we wanted to pay them seventy thousand a year. And those two are mutually exclusive items in this role. You have to be, as a smaller community, be prepared to look for a hard worker, somebody who's willing to learn, and with Cynthia in there, the one thing I found out in my role, because I came from outside, I have tons of knowledge being mayor of the projects going on, the inner workings of our town, how things were going, but the cities, the state and legal side of it was not my expertise. The one thing they learned quickly is, city government is a whole different world than private. The DNR will help you. Anybody will help you. Anybody you reach out will gladly sit down, explain the process, walk you through it, and that's kind of how you, like anything you learn. So I, I, we went through a hire, our first hire, where we thought we had to have somebody with tons of experience, and unfortunately, it didn't work out. The person lasted less than two years. Then we had to hire during COVID, and you can understand how hiring during COVID was. We had a fantastic hire, but was poached away by an engineering firm. And so I am the third city admin, so now I've felt pretty confident because I'm living in Ely and have an affection, a real strong affection for the community, and I have twenty-five years of management experience coming into the role. So I would say when you hire at this level, you're going to have to be flexible with expectations. My recommendation is getting a hard worker who's willing to put in the hours and learn.
Two points to Elvin's comment, though. If you're looking for the cheapest city manager you get, you're already behind eight ball. You're not, this is not one where you want to get the cheapest hire. I'll tell you that, so that's the reality that's out there. Just be very aware of that, and.
One thing I would add to that, a good city manager will pay for themselves multiple times over. A good city manager will get you good negotiations on land that you're purchasing deals are going through, will help you find grants, will help you find different funding mechanisms, will help you offset some of the costs you're currently spending on outside services. A good city manager should pay themselves out quickly, and that's the honest truth. Just because their role is, that's their role, is to find those dollars for the community to help out, help some of these projects come into action.
Tom, do you have another question?
I talked a little bit to answer your question about the technical expertise of someone in that position, and but I'm guessing that Elvin has it, otherwise you wouldn't be in this position here, but yes, you need that technical expertise, you know, degrees, engineering background, whatever it may be, but the ability to work collaboratively with a wide variety of people is huge, and I don't know how you find that out during an interview. I mean, that's hard to do in an interview, but having a good city manager, keep me if you get thrown under the bus, or getting phone calls, or getting texts or emails, or anything like that. Daytime, and I make sure that if I disagree with Chris, it is definitely in private, and it's not at a council table or anything like that. I want to make sure he looks good to the community because he makes me look good, and I know that. I'm very lucky, very blessed with that, so. I respect, we don't always breed everything, but we're not fighting it out in the council meetings, it's on TV and in public, so. But we have, we have discussions of finding the right person, but the technical and the people skills is huge, yeah.
And the other question. If not, thank you both for coming tonight and sharing your values with me.
One more thing, and he said, he's perfectly right. You're working with the residents. You're deflect, deflect, deflect. Right? If your council and your mayor are getting called, the people are arrayed because they're not getting that feedback, and the answer I always tell our residents is, you may not like my answer, but I'm going to explain how we got there and give you a chance to give your speak sense, so the mayor will help me with that a little bit. But that's super critical to this role you got. Like he said, you have to be able to work with anything from a state senator down to an irate resident and everywhere in between, and a lot of it is networking, creating relationships, and helping to promote your city. That's what you're here for. You're promoting your city. You want residents to want to move in there, you want businesses who are good for your community. These are all important roles. So that's a big part of the hire, so. And I'm saying that because our first terms.
Thank you, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you both very much for your time. Okay. Move on to item number seven. Discussion on motion concerning folks from L. Pelling and Curry Road Builders. When are you talking about this? I want to be cute and be wanted, I'm not. Yeah, I think it's, it's good.
Well, this is our normal shield coat, we're chipping seal that we do every year. So I got two beds like we've done the last several years, one from Pelling and one from Prairie Road Builders, and Randy is here, so if you have any questions, you can ask. But as you can see in the price system with two coats, Prairie Road Builders is cheaper, so I recommend going back.
I compared last year's, the same quotes from last year to this year, and there's what I would call a minimal increase.
Very little. Actually, both of them weren't too bad, you know, the little increase, so the less increase, the better.
Any questions, John? My proposal.
It looks like the same as last year. I don't see any, any differences. I mean, was there anything that you had on there other than the price was?
No, everything should be the same with the.
Do you see anything else?
Last year, everything didn't really have no problems, so everything looked good, did a good job. Anytime we had any issues, we addressed it right away, and we usually come up with a solution, so. But that's pretty important, in any tool, and really hope I haven't a problem.
There aren't any other questions? Entertained a motion?
For Prairie Road Builders.
I'll say it.
On favor?
Aye.
So the next step after that will be, the spring will get together, and then we'll sort of look a little bit prepared. We will, you sign the proposal, send it back.
Some kids shaking their head. Okay.
All right.
Thank you for being here.
Thanks, Randy.
Next, we'll move on to item number eight. We have with us this evening Michael Gannon, who's with Innovative Groundwater Solutions, and he's going to present his findings on groundwater modeling. This was previously provided in paper form, but Michael, I'm going to be with us this evening to review that again and to see if council has any questions, so I'll turn the floor over to Mike.
Yes, this was work that was started back in September through November of two thousand and twenty-three. When I first glanced at it, I said, yeah, this, this is a concern that the city of Fairfax should have. The proposal's a little bit cloudy as far as how many wells this new industrial park may put in, what water they may tap. What is known is they need large, large quantities, you know, upwards of fifteen million gallons per day. So anyway, go ahead, Cynthia. So obviously, I think, I think the city was very prudent to pursue this. I think you don't want to be caught later with, with issues with your water supply, especially as your city's growing. Water is huge across eastern Iowa. I'm doing the same thing for the city of Corvail. I've done this for City of North Liberty. Many, many, many communities are looking for more water, and if you have a big industrial park that is tapping it upwards of fifteen million gallons per day, it's a concern for everyone. So anyway, our basic objectives was, first of all, the city has a new well field plan. Shane Wicks with Hall Engineering is, is, I think, behind that, and they want to add four new wells over the next twenty, twenty-five years. Kind of in sequence, as the city grows, they add more wells. Their city, your city well three looks like it's a good producer at current. I don't have any issues with that. Your wells one and two, okay, you can go to the, well, keep that slide right now. The two older wells, you know, may want to be either, well, one may want to be abandoned, but you could certainly use those older wells, one and two, as standby wells if you would like. Especially well two, it seems to be a little better producer. The other concern is, okay, does a city have enough? The other concern is, okay, does the city have enough water to expand its, you know, future needs? Uh, that's one objective. Second was, okay, this new industrial park, what impact is that going to have on the city's ability to get water? From now, we're talking about the slurring aquifer, it's not the shallowest bedrock aquifer, it's it's one below the Devonia. Um, it's it's the most productive uh, aquifer of the two. Um, and uh, you know, it it provides the needs of of many, both private and public wells. So um, it's it's a very valuable aquifer. But first of all, you know, is this industrial park being impacted? And also, as part of that same question, can the industrial park get that much water? Can they get fifteen million gallons, spreading out, you know, maximizing their potential yield? With in our model, we use thirty-four wells, I, you know, again, we don't know exactly how many wells it's going to be. But um, how much can they get sustainably? Okay, Cynthia, the next slide. And this is just, you know, a quick little summary, I think most people here that know anything about Fairfax well field. Uh, well, one was put in in nineteen fifty-nine, it's getting pretty close to the end of its design life, I would say. It's been reading out a few times, it's it's a very low producer, only about eighty-eight gallons per minute is the information the city had sent me. Well, two's a little better, about two hundred and eighty-eight gallons per minute. Uh, both wells are not full completions in the slurring. What I mean by that is usually you want to utilize as much of that aquifer as you can to draw in that water. And well, three has done that, uh, wells one and two are just partial completions. So that's part of the reason why uh, they're not quite as productive as well is, especially well one. As well ages, its efficiency starts dropping off, you get minerals that start plugging up the uh, the the fractures and voids. Okay, go ahead, Cynthia. Um, this is, this is kind of uh, the footprint, you know, it's kind of hard to see maybe, but in red, the footprint of the industrial park. You can also see the phase in those wells, usually you can't just bam, put thirty-four wells in in one year. And also, they have to have enough industries and, you know, there's a lot of unknowns as far as how they would develop this this uh, well field or this industrial park. What we did is we looked at the very northeast corner, closest to to the industrial, current industrial park, as well as closest to a railroad line. That's typically how um, industrial parks are developed. We then moved west along that railroad line to phase two and phase three. The phase four is kind of down to the south, um, you know, a little bit further away from the rail line as well as the current industrial park. Okay, Cynthia, next slide. First, we're through the city, we had a model that was already regionally calibrated. And by regionally, I mean the the counties of Johnson and Lynn County. We also kind of went over into Benton County, Cedar and Iowa County. But primarily, it was focused on Lynn and Johnson County. But it was at a scale that was looking at um, the sustainability of the aquifer as a whole and not so much uh, the ability to answer those local questions. So we had to take that regional model and and develop a local scale by doing uh, several things. One, we had to make, in the model, there are these little cubes or grids uh, in in three dimensions, they're cubes. And that those cubes basically solve a very complex groundwater flow, the differential equation, but the numerical method solve it for each cube and the model software does it for literally hundreds of thousands of cubes, you know, over so many years. Um, but it's only as good as the calibration. And so, go ahead, the next slide. What we did is we calibrated at the local scale. And I made the cube small enough that they were about the same diameter as the wells themselves. Because we were looking at the pumping water level in that well. And so what I did is I took the the original uh, specific capacity, uh, well, three pumping at four hundred gallons per minute. And at four hundred gallons per minute, they have about twenty feet of drought. Okay, in my model, I pumped that well, four hundred gallons a minute in the simulation. And I tried to match that drawdown. And the reason I wanted to use original specific capacities is, like I said, an old well begins to deteriorate, the well efficiency drops off and your specific capacity goes way down. So um, but well three seems to be maintaining itself and I think it's because the voids are so large that even with some mineral minerals precipitating, they have no effect whatsoever on the production, which is a good thing. Uh, but we were able to match that very, very closely, as you can see, we had like, I think it was two tenths of a foot difference in simulated drawdown versus observed original drawdown. We also kind of looked at wells one and two, but again, they were partial completion, so we had to make some assumptions on, you know, your your um, aquifer thickness. But we came up with with somewhat similar values, well, one was less uh, helpful just because it was so old and deteriorated so much. Okay, go ahead, next little slide. And the first thing, like I said, the objective is, we wanted to see, okay, is this new well field going to be sustainable? Are the wells that are proposed, um, wells four, five, six and seven? And you you can see the years that, at least this is the schedule, uh, wells four and five installed and put it online in two thousand and twenty-eight. Um, well, six, two thousand and thirty-three, and well, seven, in two thousand and forty-three. And I made the assumption, well, actually, what an assumption, this is Shane said that they would like to pump five hundred gallons a minute, about twenty hours a day, kind of peak usage, summer usage, really, really stressing the aquifer. You know, what kind of drawdowns, what kind of interference can we look at? So we were kind of looking at a worst case, which I would tend to agree with Shane. You should never look at one of the, you know, like a winter time usage, you should always look at like last summer. We had a bad drought, we had a lot of usage, so it was kind of a perfect time to look at a worst case usage. Okay, next. And what these are, it's kind of hard, these are graphs that show the pumping water level in each well based on the model simulation. So off to the left, you can see much higher pumping water level, over time, you see it dropping off. Well, three's kind of a nice steady drop off, it's being influenced by the, but you know, by the other new wells as they're added. You can see some real steep drop offs, uh, and those are when new wells are. And um, that just increases the well interference, how those wells interact with each other. And that bottom red line and what we use there as kind of a big, the slurring is not a, it's not regulated per se, but there are limitations. And the limitation is, you don't want to pump that aquifer below the bottom of the casing uh, for two reasons. One, um, you start, you could get like a chunk of rock or sand that enters that pump, blocks it up. And, you know, everything is shut down, you have to replace the pump, usually sometimes the pumps burn out. Probably more a more important reason is, if you drop that pumping water level below the bottom of the casing, you uh, pull in air, atmospheric air into the aquifer, which I've seen it, the city of Corvail had a well that um, it was, the water was black, they had bacteria counts off the charts. And we were wondering, what's going on here? I looked at it, first of all, they put a downhole camber into the well, the water looked like alphas, alphasol, I mean, it was bubbling. Because all that air was introduced into the aquifer, into those fractures, into those voids. And as the water rose up above, that air tried to escape into the well, and so it just kept bubbling up. And what it did, it, you know, don't want bacteria in well, obviously, so um, they had to shut it down. They ended up relining it deeper so that their pump would stay within the casing. So that's how we came up with that, that lower, that five hundred and eighty-seven foot elevation. That's kind of the drop dead, you don't want your pumping water level to go below that. Either the city wells or those proposed industrial park wells. Um, go ahead. Now, with the industrial park, we we started off at kind of a a lower uh, pumping rate than what they had proposed. They 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 were looking at fifteen million gallons a day. I said, well, let's see what happens, we'll start at a lower pumping rate and and work our way up. So we started at six point eight million gallons per day with thirty-four wells phased in like that schedule shows, about two hundred thousand gallons per day. And there was additional drawdown on the city wells. You can see well three was impacted the most, it's kind of hard to see maybe from that that map, but those are contours that show kind of a zone of of depression. Other words, that that groundwater uh, elevation drops in a large area, uh, almost like a bull's eye, but kind of a a strange shape, bull's eye. Um, and well, three happens to be closer to that zone of depression than the other wells. So it has a little bit more additional drawdown. Now, there's, go ahead to the next slide. You can see by this graph that there's still, these are the city wells and their pumping level, there's still plenty of available drawdown. So you still have about sixty, seventy feet of available drawdown, but before that groundwater elevation in the well drops below the bottom of the casing, that's a good thing. Like I said, you don't want it dropping below that five hundred and eighty-seven foot elevation. And um, but there was, as as the industrial park began to pump more, there was less of that available driver. Now, even though there's plenty of water there, it does have some impacts on the city. Because obviously, the pumps are going to have to work harder, there's, it's going to take more electricity to lift that water out of the well. Um, the pump ratings are based on a certain elevation that you have to lift that water out of the well. If you drop it fifteen feet like in well three, all of a sudden, it's like, hmm, it's gonna, it's gonna either, one, it's gonna, uh, the production's gonna drop off slightly. Or number two, you know, it's going to take more electricity to get that, more energy to get that out of the ground. So you can't say there's like zero impact on the city wells, but how the DNR will look at this is, can the city still get water? And if they can, which they can, based on the model simulations, they're going to say, it's not significant. But I want you to know that for the city, it's not insignificant as far as cost. And I'll let Shane and others comment on that, it's not a huge additional cost, but over many, many years, it does that up. Um, okay, go ahead, Cynthia. Now, these next slides just show, we start increasing the amount of water that the industrial park begins to pump. And that six point eight million gallons per day, none of the industrial park wells drop below the bottom of the casing, their pumping water well. But at ten million gallons per day, um, with with all thirty-four wells pumping, we see that twenty-three out of those thirty-four industrial park wells drop below the bottom of their casing. Now, the casing in that industrial park footprint, the casing is at a higher elevation because the aquifer dips towards the west. So in other words, um, it's good for the city, the city has more aquifer at a greater depth. So in other words, you can pump, you have more available drawdown, but as you move towards the airport, that aquifer becomes shallower and shallower. So what happens then is that you have less and less available drawdown. It's not huge, but it's enough that thirty-four, or twenty-three out of the thirty-four wells uh, can't pump, you know. But they continue to pump maybe, but um, that could be a major problem if they start introducing oxygen. Uh, a rock chip gets in the pump, so. Any well drill will tell you that you do not want to drop below the bottom of the casing. And any most water managers will say the same thing, that's just a big no-no. So there's kind of a limitation there, um, at ten million gallons, it doesn't look like the industrial park could even get that. Okay, next slide, Cynthia. And again, this, oops, another, let's just show the graphs, this, the city wells keep getting closer and closer to that bottom of the casing elevation, they still have, um, I think the the minimum uh, available drop is fifty-three feet, I think, around there, fifty to sixty feet. So there's still plenty of available drawdown. Okay, next slide. Now, this one, you can't see off, because the slide's kind of cut off way over on the right side, that's when the wells, the wells are pumping at fifteen million gallons per day. Each well pumping about four hundred and forty-one thousand gallons a day. Uh, massive amounts of well interference, as you can see, those those are the the cone, that's the cone of depression. Um, the elevation drops, you know, down, 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 uh, within that industrial park footprint. Um, the amount of drawdown on the city wells, I believe, is twenty-two feet, you can't see that, no, it's more than that. What is that? Um, it's it's not cut by slide, but the the screen is getting cut off there, twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven.
Thank you, thank you very much, appreciate that, I need a little help. But still, a lot of available drawdown, but but you can see there, all thirty-four industrial park wells, the pumping water level has dropped below their casing. So that's not a sustainable amount of water that that industrial park can even produce. But even if they could, um, there's still a lot of available drive, go ahead and Cynthia, the next slide. Um, this shows, again, it's dropping, it's getting steeper and closer to that um, five hundred and eighty-seven foot elevation is what we used, but still available drive. Um, but like I said earlier, there's additional costs there to the city because there's more lift to get that same water out of the ground. And I'll let Shane has some help with that, um, you could probably use like a pump rating her to come up with that. Um, but the DNR, if they if they know that he can still get water and it's not going to affect your long-term uh, production or your sustainability, uh, they aren't going to, they aren't going to stop a water use permit. Now, in this case, they would stop, they they probably wouldn't allow a fifteen million gallon uh, per day permit simply because it's not attainable for the industrial park. So, okay, he's at the end of that. Now, this slide just shows, um, at fifteen million gallons, what is that available drawdown? As you get closer and closer to that industrial park footprint, it's zero. And you can see it 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 drops off, um, the closer you get to the industrial park. What this says is probably not a good idea if that industrial park does go into uh, um, operation and they do begin pumping. If the city wants to expand its well field, I would say move to the southwest or or northwest. Um, as opposed to moving to the east. Um, I think you'd be running into more and more issues. The the, and I I don't really know why the city would go east because really, the permability, which is the ability of water to move through that rock, is highest in the Fairfax and Walfer area. Um, if there's what we call karst conditions in that slurring, karst has caverns and has huge void, I mean, literal voids, sometimes up to five to ten feet, I've seen a void uh, ten feet in thickness. Imagine how much water can move through that void. Um, a friend of mine that works for the Iowa Geological Survey, Rick Rangel, they just rehabbed one of their observation wells, which is halfway between Walfer and Fairfax. And I called him and I said, well, you know, how did look? He said, wow, he said, we, they were trying to reline or recase the well. He said, we could pump that thing, we have virtually no drawdown in that well. So it shows, it's not everywhere, but it shows that the the higher production is off to the west, southwest and northwest of the city. So that's to your advantage, if the city should expand, you know, even beyond those those other four wells. I think really, those new wells that are proposed, they're going in the right direction. All indications are, is the production is much higher toward the southwest. So I I also looked at a little bit of the interference, if the city of Walfer should go from private wells now to a large public water system, um, there was my, very minor well interference based on what their growth is going to be and and the number of people that live there, unless they would get like a new ethanol plant or something. Um, it it was in the, you know, probably maybe at the most a flir too, you know, in in the in the new wells. But nothing that's going to really be really almost measurable uh, to the city, which is good. Because I think, you know, I think Fairfax and Walfer both growing. Um, Fairfax has a public water system, Walfer doesn't. Um, if you do concentrate the pumping, you will get more drawdown as opposed to having private wells and spreading that out. Um, but anyway, that was addressed in this as well. Okay, go ahead, I think the summary here pretty much touched on everything. It looks as if, yes, the city of Fairfax can get the water they need from the the slurring aquifer over the next twenty-five years, uh, adding forming wells, like like I said earlier, wells one and two, the city can decide if they want to use those as standby wells. Personally, I I would probably go ahead and abandon well one, it's just not worth the effort to maintain at eighty-eight gallons per minute. I mean, you could, but well two, definitely, I would keep because it's it's pumping at two hundred and eighty-eight gallons per minute. Um, and wells one and two are right next to each other almost, so there's a lot of well interference. And, you know, uh, but adding those those four B wells, plenty of water for the city. Even plenty of water for the city if that industrial park should, you know, come come to fruition, I'm not sure it will. Even plenty of water for the city if that industrial park should, you know, come, come to fruition. I'm not sure it will. Um, we don't know, maybe you know more about the future of that. Uh, there was some talk about the city, um, trying to obtain more water from the Cedar River. I don't know, everything's kind of a mystery. Uh, what should the city do? I would say, I would stay in close contact with the Iowa DNR. That's what I would do first of all, because the Iowa DNR, uh, to get the water they need, they're gonna need a water use permit. Anything over twenty-five thousand gallons a day, you need a water use permit. So first of all, stay in contact with Chad Fields, with Mike Anderson, with the Water Supply Engineering Section of the DNR. They will have to get a permit. And if, if you give Chad or Mike Anderson a heads up, they will let you know. So you'll know, okay, are they trying to get it out of the slurring? Or are they trying to work with the city of Cedar Rapids, another couple radial flacker wells along the Cedar River? Completely different aquifer will have no impact on us from the city of Fairfax. Um, the other thing is, is I, you know, if, if, if the industrial park folks came to me and said, hey, can we get fifteen million gallons? I'm gonna say, no. Not based on what I have. And, and, uh, our model probably is the most updated, dated model within the state of Iowa for this one. And I'm not just bragging, I'm just saying that, that we, we spent, you know, we, we developed it back in two thousand thirteen. Almost the entire year, two thousand, um, or two thousand twenty-three, we updated it. We updated it with all new information, all new pump tests. We calibrated it, we did statistical analysis on it. I mean, is it perfect? No, but that's what we used and we find it at the local scale. So you're not gonna probably have a better tool to answer the questions, both for the city and this industrial park. So if the DNR came to me and said, can they get that water? I'm gonna say, they can get water, but they can't get the, they can't get the additional money. Um, they have to leave it up to the DNR deciding. They may say, okay, industrial park folks, if you wanna prove this, you're gonna have to spend all this money. And I tell you, um, if you wanna develop a model from scratch, you're gonna spend a lot more mo, money than what the city of Fairfax spent. Fortunately, we had a good calibrated regional model that we could model into a local scale. So with that, um, if you have any questions, comments, uh, probably went way too long. But, um, I appreciate your time.
I have a question. So is this something that you'll, will you, um, or will we send this to the DNR so they have a file?
Uh, you don't have to, but if, you know, it might be helpful if you haven't gone to the DNR and asked for, uh, a permit modification. I, I would, if you eventually wanna add these four new wells, uh, the DNR is gonna, they, they may not, they may not require this model, but you can say, hey, we did this model. And it looks very, very feasible, um, it's just very sustainable. Um, so I mean, it's, it's gonna be a plus.
And then it would be a negative for Cedar Rapids?
Well, for this industrial park, I, I think, I think it would definitely raise red flags to the DNR. Um, I used to work at the DNR for twenty-five years before I, uh, started my business. Um, I worked closely with them, uh, worked, you know, you, you, you maintain a relationship with them. You maintain a sense of integrity, and integrity for most sites. I, I don't, you know, obviously Fairfax is, is paying me to do this. But, um, if, if the industrial folks came to me, I said, well, there's an issue there. You know, I, whether you pay me or not, I don't think you, you're not gonna get fifteen million gallons out of that footprint. Um, just the way it is. And so I guess the, the benefit to you is that the DNR has worked closely with me in the past. Um, they, they, uh, we have a good working relationship. That doesn't give you a rubber stamp of approval, but it certainly helps, I think. And if, if you wanna submit your, this amendment here, uh, why are you screaming that? This would be a benefit for the city. Absolutely. But you don't have to, you don't have to. Yeah.
Mike, your, your model is very comprehensive. Did, does any of that information reflect any possible impact on private wells that we may have in here?
Well, it would, if, if those private wells are anywhere around that zone of depression. Very likely, because most private wells do not go deep. They go deep enough for that private well owners' needs. Um, and I can, I can guarantee you that there are private wells within that zone of depression. And if, if they, uh, any of them go dry. Private wells are priority number one in the state of Iowa. They have a higher priority than, than city wells. They have a higher priority than industrial, they have, I mean, they are priority number one. So, um, when I worked for the DNR, we, we dealt with a lot of issues of private wells going dry. Um, usually they, they got resolved with either the industrial well or, or if it's a city well that's causing the private well to dry. They always settle out, they, they say, oh, we're fault, hey, we're, and I can argue this. Um, now there are instances where, you know, it's not legitimate. But I can, I can guarantee you there are private wells there. Usually they go maybe twenty, thirty feet into the aquifer max. They don't, they don't need to go any deeper than that, and the slurring is so productive, why would they? But as you can see, you know, I think we had, in that footprint of the industrial park, a hundred and twenty feet dry. And that just radiated out, as you got, you know. Fortunately for the city, it's, you know, they're two miles away from this, so as you, as you move out, that drawdown gets less and less. Um, but yeah, good point. That would be, I mean, the DNR would probably veto this, not just on the quantity, but also impacts on the private walls. Absolutely.
Does council have any other questions? No, thank you very much.
Do that, my pleasure. If anyone has questions later, they can let Shane know, we're in contact with the mayor. They have my email, so thank you very much.
Next, we'll move on to number nine and, um, the public hearing section of our agenda. We do have four public hearings on our agenda tonight. So in order to make them most effective for both the public and, and the council, um, I've provided some guidelines and I'm gonna read them before we start on the first public hearing and then we'll move forward. So a public hearing is intended to provide, provide the public in general and those particularly affected by a proposed municipal action, the opportunity to provide input regarding the policy options available to the city council. Cities are required to hold public hearings before taking action on certain items. So here's how we're gonna handle our four public hearings tonight. First, there's gonna be a presentation on the hearings topic. Please do not interrupt any of the speakers, there's gonna be separate time for questions. Next, both written and in-person questions from the public regarding only the public hearings topic will be addressed with a seven-minute maximum time allowed per public member. Please step to the podium and state your name and address before speaking. If you have multiple questions, please state them all at the beginning so the presenters can be thinking about them in their responses. After the questions are posed, the, the topics presenter will respond to the questions. After all those questions have been discussed, then the floor will be turned over to the city council, who will then in turn discuss the topic further and possibly have additional questions. After all the questions, um, have concluded, then the public hearing will be closed. And a council vote may occur. So that's our game plan for our public hearings. So our first one, number nine, is regarding the twenty-twenty-four water main extension under the Union Pacific Railroad project. And.
You know, we can summarize this one.
Sure. John Larson with Hall and Hall will be maybe summarizing that project for us. I'm gonna open the public hearing first, John.
All right, this public hearing was just for planning, specs, and soliciting this for the construction of two hundred and six feet of one-inch water main, um, on the side of one fifty-one. Uh, there's, there's currently a gap in the system, uh, between railroad street and low seat underneath the fracts. Um, the, uh, our cost estimate came out to about three hundred two thousand one hundred dollars. Um, and, uh, that's pretty much it.
Cynthia, did we receive any written comments from the public?
Not any written, or, or, not that I know of.
Okay. Does anyone present in the public have any questions for John regarding this particular, um, topic? Water main extension under the UP. If not, I will close the, um, well, no, first we'll have council discussion. And then. Are you all good? Questions? No questions from the council, then I'll, I'll close the public hearing. And we'll move on to number ten. Consider resolution to award the contract for the water main extension under the UP railroad project.
All right, so we opened it all up for this a couple of weeks ago. Uh, got four bids, Chip Frye, Pierce Tobin, Brackey, and Boomerang. Uh, Chip Frye was the, a little better, had three hundred thirty-nine thousand, eight hundred thirty dollars and sixty cents. So came out a little over our, our estimate, however, it's still within, uh, the, the construction budget, uh, in the CIA for this project. Um, so Chip Frye has been counter-tractor, they're reputable. Uh, worked with them before, not in Fairfax, but elsewhere. Um, so we recommended working to Chip Frye, excuse me. Any questions?
Hello, for the bids received. We have a motion to adopt the resolution, some of. Cynthia?
Sir.
Roll call, please, Mayor.
Aye.
Aye, aye, aye.
Thank you. We'll move on to number eleven. Consider resolution to approve amendment number two, um, to Hall and Hall Professional Services Agreement on this same project.
Did everybody have a chance to read through the amendment, any extra work involved, uh, throughout this project? Um, essentially, um, what it amounts to is, obviously, Union Pacific was involved in this, which, um, led to a lot of unexpected coordination and administrative work and, and normally specializing to get this, uh, the crossing project underway. Um, and as part of that, the delays and everything with Union Pacific, uh, before we got the okay. Um, the, the beginning of this project, when we started out, uh, the plan was to package the UP portion, the Prairie Creek Crossing, which I completed last summer, as one project and bid it out. That didn't happen with the, the Union Pacific delays. Uh, we got the Prairie Creek one done last year, therefore split plans, specs into another bid opening, uh, administering another contract, and the actual work involved with that. Um, the other chunk of this goes back to that Prairie Creek Crossing. Um, the adjacent property in order there. We, uh, the goal was to acquire easement from them, and, uh, it kinda fell through the very last minute. And, um, that led to us sending a redesign, you know, I mean, uh, um, moving in, uh, I wanted to one right way, revising, submitting the, the DOT right away for that. Um, and then all the other coordination and administrative efforts involved doing that. So. Any questions?
Hearing no questions, I consider a, a motion to, uh, adopt the resolution to approve amendment number two to the Hall and Hall Professional Services Agreement for the water main extension project.
Motion.
Roll call, I'm gonna state.
Aye, aye, aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, John. Next, we'll move on to item number twelve, which is another public hearing. This public hearing is regarding the West Cemetery Road Bridge Project. And I'm going to open the public hearing and Shane Wicks will present some information.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, first I'd like to say, we have exhibits on the side in the back, the exhibits on that table are one set of exhibits, those are the same exhibit, so I'm gonna watch and look at them. While we're discussing this, we also have some copies of the schedule. It's my manager and this manager, the two options on this table, you have a chance to meet them. Um, I'd also like to introduce Noah Hopf Richter. Noah works with, uh, origin design, we ran, I love him, I'm hanging on this project, so. He's, uh, can you all be, correct me where I'm wrong, or there's questions that I'm not able to answer. So, thanks for coming up today. Um, so Cynthia, if you could go to the, uh, the exhibits showing the, either the sixty-five foot or the eighty-foot bridge, it's got profile on the bottom, so it's got two views.
Okay. Photos.
Because the one's called profile.
Okay.
Okay. So I'll start out, the, the existing bridge that's out there right now is twenty-two foot long, was built in nineteen seventeen. So by the time this project's done, we're gonna be one hundred and ten year old. And it's, uh, in old shape. The, uh, the bridge downstream, the Highway one fifty-one bridge that was just completed here in the last few years is a hundred and forty feet. It's made quite a difference there. So we're, we're falling somewhere in between closer to the shorter and the longer, but, um. So with the two bridge options, now, no, can you make that bigger, Cynthia, or not?
I'm having trouble, and I think we, if I make it bigger, it comes off the screen.
Okay. So, some of you probably know, some may not, there's the abutments, which are right here and right here. So basically the beginning and the end of the bridge, and then there's piers. And that is the, uh, kind of the wall or the piles that are located in between the abutments. So the exhibit that Cynthia has, uh, is a sixty-five foot two-span. So there's the abutment, there's a span for the first pier, there's one, one pier and there's one, and then there's a span in the abutment. So this bridge option has one pier and two span. The other option is a eighty-foot three-span bridge, so it has an abutment, a span to a, uh, pier, and then another span to a pier, and then the span to the other abutment. So there's three spans, two piers, two abutments. Now, on both of these bridge options, the abutments, or the tall abutments is what we're planning at this point. So your standard abutments and tall abutments, I'll, I'll kind of run through those briefly in a couple of minutes, but, uh, bring through a couple of things here first. So with the two options, the easterly abutment is gonna be generally in the same location for each bridge option. And then the sixty-five foot bridge is shown up up here, it's gonna be located right there, a little bit to the west side of the bridge. The eighty-foot bridge would be about fifteen feet beyond that to the west. So we hold the east abutment generally in the same location, and the longer bridge would expand fifteen feet further west. So can you go to the photos, Cynthia?
I'll try.
I'll try. That?
Yeah, that one's fine, so this is actually the highway bridge that was just completed, just downstream. So. Right there is your abutment, that's a standard abutment, it's very short, and then the ground is typically sloped away from it. And right there is the pier. So when we reference as piers, that'd be piers, and that'd be the abutment, that's a standard abutment. In the Highway one fifty one bridge, those piers are individual columns. What we'd be looking at would be one solid wall, it wouldn't be individual columns. Alright, can you go to the next photo? Again, that's the standard abutment. That bridge is the one that was just done south of Mount Vernon Road on Burson Road. Just opened up here last year, that's the standard abutment, the ground slopes away. Go to the next one. That's the same bridge, but it's the opposite side, so that's a tall abutment, so if you wanna arc it exactly like that, typically that's what a tall abutment, simple thing, basically a wall, just extend further down. Alright, can you go to the typical cross section of the bridge?
Typical bridge section?
Yes, yeah. Alright, so this is basically a cross section of the bridge. On the left would be the north side of the bridge, on the right would be the south side of the bridge. And this is gonna be the same, no matter what bridge option is chosen, either the sixty five foot long bridge or the eighty foot long bridge, it's the same cross section. So on the north side, we would be looking at a uh, I can't read that right up there. Yeah, it's a uh that whole rail barrier or something similar to that. So it'd be opening to allow the drainage through on the north side, and then you have two sixteen foot travel lanes, you can go in each direction. And then we'd have a solid barrier wall that would separate the the traffic, vehicular traffic, and then eight foot wide sidewalk on the south side, and then it would be a chain link fence on the very south edge of the bridge. Back to the photos, yeah, a couple of neighbors, what that typically looks like.
Hang on, if anybody can read it better than me, which one is the photo? That's them?
A couple down.
Here? Okay, thank you. I assume you wanna go?
Right there. So that's that's kind of the view then um of the sidewalk. Should that be a sidewalk, and on the left side of it is the concrete barrier wall. Now, the wall has to reach a certain height, they've got basically a railing on top of it. We're anticipating our barrier wall would just be taller, wouldn't have a railing on it. And then on the south side is the chain link fence, six foot tall is what we planned. So it's very similar to that. Let's go down to the next one. The one difference is we, what we talked about, it is possibly doing black vinyl, just looks a little bit nicer, so that's just an example of black vinyl chain link fence. So I want to get into the bridge. That one, I think, is four foot high, but I think we were anticipating six foot in height. And I just wanted to say enough that this is all preliminary design stuff, final design is not complete, so things may vary slightly from what we're saying. But this is generally what we discussed so far. So on this picture, um there's a sidewalk, that's more decorative railing on the barrier wall and on the side. Um we're looking at that level for this bridge. You can see on the other side is that open barrier wall, barrier wall that we were talking about, so it'd be similar to that. Is that our last photos, Cynthia?
I think so, yeah.
Yeah, okay. Moving on to bridge hydraulics. So for the hydraulic modeling calculations that Noah had run. The flood elevation is just upstream of the bridge. And West Cemetery Road, the hundred year elevation is dropped by about two feet. So Cindy, I'm gonna ask you to go to one of the um site exhibits.
Okay. Anybody, can you read yours better, which which?
I think the blue, the button, the next blue one down, right there. Right there.
Okay.
So upstream of the road, the bridge. That red line is the hundred year flood plain boundary. And on this side, it kinda surrounds the existing building for trap, advanced traffic, is that? So that's the hundred year flood, and that's that's kind of the typical flood plain or flood elevation that uh the project are designed to. So with the new bridge, both the sixty five foot bridge and the eighty foot bridge, that new flood plain would actually come in significantly, and that's that blue line. So that flood plain elevation upstream of the bridge drops by about two feet or so. Maybe a little bit more just upstream of the bridge. The south side of the bridge, I don't know, Cindy, can you zoom in a little bit and go to the south, we have that casting color from the building, I'd like to see. On the south side of the bridge.
How's that?
That's good, for the hydraulic modeling and calculation, the flood elevations at the existing outbuildings. So that's the existing outbuilding just downstream. So the existing flood elevations at that building um are not being changed with either bridge option compared to the existing, so the existing and the proposed hundred year flood plain is that same line right there, and on this side, it does change a little. This is coming out there where it comes back this way, and it's kind of off the screen. The uh the other thing with the two bridges, so this is the sixty five foot bridge. So as you recall, that east abutment is generally in the same location for both bridge options. The sixty five foot bridge, the uh west abutment is gonna be right over in this area. The eighty foot bridge is gonna be about fifteen feet west of that, so. The uh the thing, one of the uh, there's several things that Noah and his team looked at, but I don't know. But one of the things they look at is the active flow area versus the ineffective flow areas. So the green in this area is considered active flow, and then the yellow is the ineffective flow areas. So what that means is uh there's a line that separates the active flow and the ineffective flows. That's basically that straight line, it comes down from the abutment here, down from the abutment there. That line is the ideal line established with the the flow modeling that Noah and his team used. And uh so the ineffective flow ineffective flow area line is established at an angle that extends downstream of the abutment walls of the proposed bridges. The actual ineffective flow area lines will likely differ some from the ideal lines that are established as part of this model. The active flow area in this area inside the two lines is labeled as to the actual ineffective flow area lines will likely differ some. The active flow area in this area inside the two lines labeled as ineffective flow area lines. In the shade of green, and on the attached siding, well, I'm just basically describing what you're seeing there, so. The active is the green area, so basically the channel, and it comes out from there, and then the ineffective is the yellow. Now, if you go on this exhibit. You gotta see that line, it's hard to see with the shading, but that line is just outside the the corner of that building. So the active versus the effective flow falls just outside the southwest one of that building. If you go to the other exhibit, it's Cindy with the eighty foot bridge option.
He doesn't wanna move, Shane.
Yeah. Well.
Is that good enough?
Yeah, it's good, so with that, that west abutment being fifteen feet over, that's what that line's extended down. It kinda cuts that southeast corner of the building, the difference between the actual area and the ineffective flow areas. The difference between those two areas um is that the active flow areas um has velocity with it. And this is a hundred year storm event, I believe is around two to three feet per second, so they're not real high flow areas, causing that general area. Um but the effective flow areas doesn't have really any velocity, it's just water that fills out into the low areas. And uh the active flow area will carry debris, so you have more chance to collect debris um in your active areas than you in your ineffective flow areas. And zoom in a little bit more on that, Cynthia. Hey, now I didn't point out before, can you pan up at all or not?
I could on the other one, this one it won't do it.
Need a key word, so the existing hundred year flood elevation. Existing hundred year flood comes out here, pans up, cause the existing roadway accesses a dam. And then the hundred year spills over the road, and it drains south towards that that eastly side of the building, so. In the current conditions, that eastly portion of the outbuilding is experiencing some active flows on the hundred year storm. Um so this this option with the bridge is is not really changing a hundred year storm event, cause the hundred year is um overtopping in that corner of the building, that eastly portion of the building is experiencing active flows during a hundred year event. But that's one of the differences with the eighty foot versus the sixty five foot bridges, pushes that abutment over. Keeps that active flows a little bit further away from that building. Other items considered with the hydraulic modeling of the bridge. So go ahead and zoom out a little bit there, Cynthia.
Oh, you got the same drawing?
Yeah, I can see the side of the side of it. So a couple of things that are looked at for sizing the bridge um is overtopping of the roadway. We look at the fifty year storm event. We wanna make sure that the road has one foot of free board, the low point elevation, clarify. Has one foot of free board above the fifty year storm event. And in this case, the low point is um right over here. So it'd be on the eastly side of the the proposed driveway and advanced from traffic. The uh fifty year storm event, I believe that elevation is at seven fifty five point six, just upstream of the bridge. You had to put onto that, we're at seven fifty six point six with the minimum elevation we'd want. D O T criteria, correct, thanks. And the proposed low point elevation in there, preliminary. We're already in that general area, like, man, what to afford higher than the existing condition, so. Really hard to push that up any higher. The other thing that's considered is um the clearance of the bridge itself, so the water elevation on the bridge. Um so what you'd like to achieve is three foot clearance above the fifty year storm event. Yeah, for the D N R requirements. And you want three foot clearance from the fifty year storm event at the front base of the bridge to the roll member of the bridge deck. And so right at the upstream base of the bridge. Right in through here, our fifty year storm event elevations is seven fifty five point four. You had a three foot um clearance in there, so seven fifty eight point four. And then on the sixty five foot bridge deck, which is a little thicker, um the proposed elevation, low elevation is the seven fifty eight point six. So it's only two tenths of a foot higher than the minimum clearance. So so those are a couple of design criterias that we looked at sizing the elevations on the bridge. But Cindy, can you go on to the uh the sheet, the compares and chief, the two options, and show us the advantages and disadvantages?
That one?
Yes. So I'm just gonna basically read them off, you know, if you have a copy of that in the car, you can read one if you want, or but uh the sixty five, the two span, sixty five foot bridge option. Um advantages would be a little less maintenance due to debris. Um since there's only one pier, the downstream active flow area is further away from the existing outbuilding, located just downstream southwest of the the bridge and the creek. Um one pier, there is more clearance between the pier and possible future trail. Likely lower long term maintenance costs. Likely with the shorter bridge deck. And then with the one pier, there's slightly less risk, more unknown with the pile lengths during the construction, cause you have less timing. Um the disadvantages for that two span sixty five foot bridge would be that it's not a standard typical Iowa D O T bridge design. So there would be a little bit of additional design costs, approximately six thousand dollars for that bridge. So they have a thicker bridge deck and reinforcing detail in the design of the additional costs for that. And then the other one is it has the thicker decks, so there'd be slightly less vertical clearance over a possible future trail. Um which at this time would be approximately nine point two feet. Now, the three span eighty foot bridge, the advantage is that it's a standard typical Iowa D O T bridge design, there are additional design costs. The bridge deck is a little thinner, um so there'd be slightly more more clearance over a possible future trail. Approximately nine point six feet. Um may allow for slightly lower flood elevations upstream of the bridge during the extreme flooding events. So typically designed for the hundred year. The hundred year immediately upstream from the bridge, the hundred year flood elevation is the same for both options. The two hundred year storm event, the eighty foot bridge would have a flood elevation one tenth lower than the eighty five foot bridge, shows minimal. On the five hundred year storm event, which is a very extreme storm event, um there'd be about two foot, or two tenths, point two feet difference between the eighty foot bridge and the sixty five foot bridge. Just to put that in perspective, and think in two thousand fourteen, for those of you that were around, I grant it was completely, you know, overlookant the existing bridge condition. Um but that was around a three hundred fifty to four hundred year storm event, just based on the numbers. So more than two hundred, less than five hundred, but very large event. So something like that, you're talking a tenth to two tenths difference is between the bridge, so not not a big difference, but there is a difference. Um disadvantages, uh the eighty foot bridge, we would anticipate the next week to two weeks construction, so that additional pier and the pilings that would have to go in with it. There probably be additional costs with construction observation time to that as well, for your additional time on the field. The downstream active flow area approaches upon the southeast corner, corner of the existing outbuilding, south of the, the road and the bridge. And with the two piers, there's less clearance between the pier and possible future trail, east side of the creek. And slightly more maintenance, debris you'd have in two piers. One other thing I wanna point out with those comparisons, the the costs, the projected costs are basically the same in twenty, twenty six dollars for the removal of the existing bridge and the construction of the bridge itself. It's estimated to be about eight hundred and twenty five thousand dollars for both bridges. So really not a, you know, there may be a slight difference ultimately, but from an estimation standpoint, they're, they're pretty much the same cost. The overall project is gonna be closer to, you know, one point eight to two million dollars. You got your approaches. You got your dead hole, you got your investment and other things they wanted, so that's just the structure itself. But we don't anticipate much difference with the overall project costing, or the bridge structure itself is where you can see most of the difference between the two options, there really isn't, so. So there's not an advantage or a disadvantage from a cost standpoint. Okay, we're talking about this fifty five foot bridge, or maybe a little bit more design cost, or maybe a little bit more construction observation cost on the eighty foot bridge, you know, there may be a little bit more of that, not much of the other, but. No, overall in picture, the costs are are pretty comparable. So then the last thing I wanted to touch base with with everyone on is the anticipated finding schedule. So we've basically completed A, B, C, and D so far. And right now, we're on E, providing some information on the bridge structure. Move forward F, G, and H, so the concept statement to the Iowa D O T, submit the Iowa D and our floodplain permit. And then geotechnical services, we anticipate in March. Probably done in March, so. So origin and home all work on F and G. We'll have Terracan out there, maybe by the end of February, most likely is March, you know, to do their, their slow boarding, collect information, and file their report. So after that, we get environmental currents, hopefully, you know, sometime late spring, early summer. Then we can start property appraisals, so appraising a lot of property owners, get appraisals completed. Then we start coordinating with the property owners that could be impacted by the project right away, with the easement. Then we go through the process. The, the final, the final item on their queue, so bridge construction, we're anticipating in twenty twenty six. The as you are all aware, this bridge is kind of offset from the existing location. And part of that is tied into revised intersection connection at Highway one fifty one, so that's a separate project, so. Or, or aiming for is to do that part of the project in twenty twenty five, and then the bridge project in twenty twenty six. So we're anticipating the bridge project completed in twenty twenty six, and then the intersection project, which is one of these of the bridge in twenty twenty five. And that's why I have to mention limitation, and I'll try to answer these questions the best we can.
Thanks Shane, we'll start with Cynthia, did we receive any comments prior to the meeting? No, no, okay. Does anyone in the public wish to approach the podium and ask questions?
Good evening. Barbara Connor, one on one wings Boulevard. I have a few questions. Where is the drawing of the West Cemetery Hill Bridge without trail accommodations or sidewalk accommodations?
Do you have multiple questions, Barb, you asked, could you go through all of them, and then, and then they'll respond individually, thank you.
Uh, the council hasn't, I'm just gonna kind of go through what I've got written down, the council hasn't approved a trail yet on and under this bridge. So why is the council only being shown, and us being shown designs with those accommodations? And none without, along with those costs? I'd just like to see, you know, if there was anything else submitted. What is the difference in elevation between the existing bridge and the new designs? The one fifty one bridge, Highway one fifty one was revised, or I'm sorry, it was raised two feet, up, up to thirty two inches on the travel portion of one fifty one over one fifty one, solely for Fairfax's trail, to go underneath it. So if there are no trail accommodations that the city or the council has not, uh, you know, said that it was okay for, hasn't, you know, planned for at this point, then why are we thinking about a bridge with trail accommodations? It's kind of like the property reports, you might think, and a few others as well. And how much of our property is going to be acquired for this project? Where will the riprap be on our property or around our property, how close to our property? Councilman Daly, not this, probably two or three meetings ago, when we were talking about this bridge project, he said that, that I asked if there were gonna be bids taken for the engineering project for all of this, and he said, yes, yeah, a company would be, I'd like to know which company put this in. And where I can look at those bids, and we can look at those bids and see whatever people have ideas, whether companies have those ideas, you know, for this that didn't get the bid. Yeah, I'd just like to see those designs of the other company who didn't get the bid. Thanks.
Okay, thanks Barb. Shane, are you and or no other to address those questions?
Do we wanna do it one on one, or do we wanna wait till other people have a chance to talk?
Let's, let's do these right now, and then we'll go on.
They may answer some questions.
Yeah, for that other people might have, yeah, so just go ahead and take care of Barb's first.
All right, so the first question I had, where's the drawings with or without trails, sidewalk accommodations? Is it with or without?
I wanna know, I wanna know, you've submitted only trail or a bridge plans with trail accommodations. Is that correct?
So what we submitted for tonight's meeting?
Correct.
We've submitted what's, what's on the exhibits.
That's correct, and so are those designs made to accommodate a trail going underneath that bridge?
So the bridge design is proposed to accommodate a trail under the bridge.
Okay, where are?
And it is designed for a sidewalk along the south side of the bridge.
Okay. So the council, to my knowledge, has not voted to have a trail underneath that bridge, so where are the door designs that shows in the cost of a bridge that wouldn't have that?
So for right now, council has not approved the trail part of this project, so there's not a trail part of this.
So where is your other design, the third design, that shows without in the cost for that?
There's, there's no design.
I think I can answer that. So what, what we are anticipating with this, or what we're doing with this project is just like we did with your initial Highway one fifty one project, where if you're going to at some point in the future, install an underground or under the bridge trail for safety reasons, we have to design that in now. And whether they do it now, or they never do it, or twenty years from now, it has to be designed and built like that. So there, they would just ledge an area underneath like they did on the one fifty one bridge, and it will just stay like that until some point in future, when and if the council ever decides to add the trail. But you have to build it now, you can't come back in and do it later.
The problem is, the damage is done to our property and to us because of that. The elevation and the encroachment on something that I've been told by several here that is never gonna happen, may never happen, but guess what? We're being damaged at that now. And the taxpayers are paying a tremendous amount of money.
It's not, it's.
Extra. Really?
Go ahead, Shane, yeah, I'm not gonna get into that at this question.
I would, because this is, this is.
Well, tonight's public hearing is for the, for the design going on in this bridge, so.
Okay, and that's what I'm asking, so we have a bridge that is being designed to accommodate a trail that the council hasn't even decided it's ever going to be.
We can't, the reality is, we can't afford to do that at this point, yeah.
So we are designing to accommodate a real bridge. But that is not the dictating criteria. The hydraulics, as I told in my first presentation, we only have two tenths clearance above the fifty year. So we could lower it two tenths. But then you might add that fifty year. Plus, there's the profile that dictates that elevation as well, there's the low point overflow as well, that's dictated by the fifty year. Also, that's what's really dictating the, the clearance to the side of the bridge is the hydraulics.
Matter of fact, the D O T, D N R.
The D O T requirements, the D O T, the D N R.
And when you say two tenths Shane, it's two tenths of a.
Foot, foot, alright, so that's about two and a half inches.
So that's the difference, that's the difference in the height of the bridge.
So yes, it's being considered to accommodate a trail, but hydraulics are dictating the elevation.
So you're telling me and everybody here that the source of that road, the West Cemetery Road, is gonna be raised only two tenths of a inch?
Two tenths.
No, no, okay, then Larry's saying, how, how much taller is that gonna be?
We're saying that fifty year flood at the upstream side of the bridge has an elevation of seven fifty five point four. And then, you know, it's the D N R. Three foot clearance above that to the lowest point of the stack. That's seven fifty eight point four. And our most proposed elevation is seven fifty eight point six.
And with no terminal accommodations underneath that bridge, this would be exactly the same?
Yes.
You're sure on that?
Yes, you are.
Okay, because that's not the nature of the park, the park has the design, so, on, on the highway bridge, so.
Well, that's, the highway bridge is not this bridge.
That's right.
The highway bridge is the D O T's bridge.
So what was the next question Shane?
Next question I had was, uh, bridge elevation, existing, existing.
So that, we've been talking about that already.
We need clarification on that one. Our right away acquisitions, then we'll get into right away acquisitions, and like I said in the schedule, much for now, so we can't talk about.
Are there going to be, I might only follow with this, more problems?
We'll talk about that when we know more, right now, we're just trying to figure out which bridge option, we don't know what the right away acquisitions and the adjacent problems are.
Until the bridge design is chosen, it, it's.
Yeah, we can't, until the council says, we're going with the sixty five foot bridge or the eighty foot bridge, we can't go forward and find licenses or details. So, you know, if we can stand track with the schedule here, hopefully we can talk with even the other adjacent property owners. I'm lucky in that, but we can't give you that answer. Your investment on approaching Barb's property, same answer, really can't tell you, it was kind of that answer. And other bridge designs, there are one of the bridge designs, I, I, I didn't understand that question, so.
I thought I was pretty clear about that. Where is, why is there not a bridge design without trail accommodations under it? And, and now we have a twenty two foot bridge that you're exploding into this monstrosity. And why is that?
I don't know, I was like, where's the hydraulics?
Like, one point of that.
And I, and I would like to say that I've traveled around too, and I'm looking at the bridges and the D O T is building upstream this pipe, and they're not eighty feet long or wide, they're just not.
So one of the things that this bridge has to get is permitting from the Iowa D N R floodplain permit. The Iowa D N R issues state floodplain permits when the drainage area is larger than two square miles, which is about two minutes. One of the D N R's key criteria is that the backwater caused by the bridge structure. So that is the amount of water increase being caused compared to if there were no structure or road there at all has to be more than one foot. And so the existing bridge, based upon the numbers we ran, was causing two to three feet of backwater, it's a much more significant backwater effect. And Shane was kind of walking through that difference in this low point on the upstream, that's where that was coming from, so. The reason the bridge ends up getting the size it is, and the reason the two options are very similar, is dictated by a combination of decreasing that backwater, and also providing that three door clearance, which Shane was claiming about three foot over the fifty year storm.
So where's the water going to go south of that bridge?
That was the, the exhibits, the shame.
Exactly, yeah, yeah, problems. Problems for people south, so.
Oh no, but there's.
There's no chain, so there's no chain on the elevations or amount of flow that.
Actually, we have, we actually saw this on the southeast side of our, our, our.
But that's the, that's the physical elevation difference, you're not elevation changing much of the flow amount coming in there.
No, no.
Yes, there will, you just said it, look at the map.
The, the active flow area change is the ultimate floodplain limit, was like, from the existing proposed, that was what she explained with the red line, and then the, the yellow shading, that, that is the same, uses used to replace.
On the south, I'm sorry, on the northeast corner of our property, there will be a difference, according to what you just said.
Not, not, not where the buildings are in.
No, I'm saying on the north.
The old, what sign, the old.
On the northeast side, it will be different.
That's all in that way, yeah.
Yeah.
Now it isn't.
I need to see the specific area, that would be within the right way, it would be pretty shallow, yeah. We're not changing, we're not changing the raise. I think that's all I had for questions.
Oh, I'm building up a store, we'll, we'll be talking soon.
Thank you Barb, anyone else want to talk, okay.
I just, I just got pissed, caught up on what's going on here. Uh, and Shane, although this, this, well, well, the, the new pond detention basin that's put in annihilation up to the north.
This, this is the public hearing on the bridge design only time.
Yeah, well, but, but my question is, will that detention pond basin up there help someone also with the flow coming south? That was just my question, it's pretty generally a question. Is that the large basin up there? That, that take more of a.
I mean, the detention, detention basins with developments cut down your smaller storm events. But the hundred year storm events are typically the same. So we're talking high level storm events here, on the hundred year and larger. So it really doesn't, you know, the numbers that we're looking at, it doesn't really impact, but that's a great question.
Okay, next.
Sue, one for you, seven western, sure, I just have a question about the anticipated schedule. I know, I think it was twenty fourteen on the bridge. What am I trying to say? And when we talked to the engineer, just because we were interested, he said, well, these are gonna be replaced in three, four years. Now we're looking at almost twelve years. And I'm worried about the safety of that bridge now, and it's taken over one, you know, now or two more years before anything happens, and cars are hitting the, you know, it's dipping enough that they're hitting, if they're going fast enough, if they're going the speed of the, they're far. You know, it's dipping enough that they're hitting, if they're going fast enough, if they're going speed, they'll lift their fire, but we know that they don't know what the speed limit is there. So we've seen a few mufflers and things like that. Um, and I felt a lot. So I was just curious as to, I know things take a long time. Not complaining, but just what, to be proactive, what are we doing for our whole bridge until we get there? But you let go.
So. The. The city's been looking at trying to do something about the bridge for a long time, as you're well aware. Um, and that bridge has never scored well for getting funding. And and part of it is because Stoneman Road is right there. So theoretically, you know, instead of taking West Cemetery Road, you can take the home road. So when they talk about the bridge goes out of service, the bypass route is very short, so it's not any means to people. But if you live in the area, you know, Stoneman Road really isn't a viable option. You got a car, it's not that big of a deal, but you also it's not a front road to, now that they've turned the corners a little bit better. That intersection is not good for trucks. I know, I'm sure Tom would want to take his farm truck on Stoneman Road intersection to try to make those corners. Um, so it's not a long term viable option. Um, and then just out of the blue, a little over a year ago, the DOT's made you guys do the pump, so that's. And so that's. And and I have that same concern about, because if you look both ways, that bridge is crumbling. And, uh, so, you know, getting that done is still a cadence. Priority, but unfortunately, you know, what the city is looking to do with the bridge, revise intersection. You know, to improve that, you know, Eagle View Drive up to that development and hopefully on the mountain heights. Improve the access location, so it's more of a wide angle of the highway. This is always as you mentioned at the same time. So if you look at, you can't do the bridge on the middle of nowhere, not through the intersection. So you gotta do them kind of, so twenty-six is played as soon as we did it at this point, so. We, you know, we're trying to get this done, keep it moving forward, even property owners, and keep this thing as good as best we can. Because that's my concern is, you know, within this year, like, you gotta close the bridge and then. The next eighteen months. So I I understand what you're saying, but unfortunately, you know, we have federal dollars involved, so we have certain staff, certain procedures. And just designing a structure of a bridge takes a while in itself, so.
I and I appreciate that. I guess I was just hoping you'd hear maybe later on or keep it on the forefront of. What are we gonna do until that bridge is replaced or before it starts? Because I am worried about the wild, and I'm really worried about somebody getting hurt. And I can say there's some people that follow the. The semi rule and all that, but there's a lot of them. And maybe some more enforcement in that or something, might be something to look into that wouldn't be. Maybe very expensive, but they keep us going until.
Shane, a question about, I've forgotten. Will the bridge still be usable during the intersection reconstruction project?
We don't, we don't know all those details yet. We wanna try to get as much of the intersection done and leave the bridge open, but I really can't make any promises if this don't.
And that would be another option too, would be for us just to totally close the bridge. Until that time, I think we're reluctant to do that.
Then that hurts me like adrenaline.
So appreciate your concern. Did you have any other question?
No.
Shane, when was the last bridge inspection? Was it last year? Do you remember?
Yeah, I should know. One of my coworkers did the inspection, but I don't.
So we did have a current inspection last year.
I would have said last year.
So and it didn't score very well, but it's not to the point, like, if it gets to a point where they feel like it's unsafe, they they tell you that you need to close.
And if it gets put on more frequent inspection.
So we have, we have, it's not that bad yet, so we're, we should be able to get through, yeah. Big bad, but yeah, they did. They did. It's not bad enough where they said it needs to be. Any other questions from the floor? Before we move on to the council discussion. Okay, council. You have any questions for Shane?
Shane, weight, weight restrictions, I'm assuming with the bigger bridge, they'll be able to be expanded and.
Yeah, we, uh, the new bridge, which is our option, won't be. Yeah, well, yeah, so the weight restriction will be removed semi. Didn't go over, just like any other.
Well, with the capacity we have.
I forget that, you know, H, H twenty, H.
Maybe H L ninety-three is called, which is a full, it's a full standard semi is what it comes down to with considerations for multiple long bridges at the same time, those kind of things.
So basically, anything.
Yeah, yeah, any any standard load, any permit vehicle, those kinds of things, still need extra approvals, but you know, standard loads.
Any other questions from the council about comparing the two bridge options here? So I just wanna make sure that we all understand that the flows that are shown on these two sheets. Basically, the impact from the one to the other is the one, uh, the shorter bridge. Has less active flow onto the building. Than the eighty foot. Is that correct?
Right, and that's, again, that's an idealized line. The actual flows could vary, you know, a little bit east, a little bit west of that, but you know, it's based off the model. And modeling is, you know, just like with the aquifer that Mike Gannon talked about, it's modeled. I mean, if you went out there, we had the exact hundred years form. You never have the exact hundred years form. Compared that with four miles, it might be a couple of times larger there. It's not exact, but it's, modeling is pretty good nowadays, it's.
But basically.
So basically, that's, you know, the. From an impact on the downstream property, the the sixty-five foot have.
Less.
Less active flow on that existing structure.
If the sixty-five compared to what's right now?
No, compared to the eighty.
To the eighty.
Now, right now, and I wanna make sure everybody understands, right now. And and this active flow, ineffective flow rate is based on the hundred year storm event. That should be nice one. Right now, hundred year storm over tops the road. That roadways dam, it ponds everything up upstream, and then it obviously pushes out water underneath the bridge, which is way undersized. And that Noah kind of mentioned. That one foot of three board up, or one foot of, uh, backwater upstream is what it's supposed to be at, and right now it's pushing three or more. So this now, this bridge will accommodate that one foot of backwaters than we have there currently, so. Well, Barb says that bridge is, you know, right sized, we'll put a monstrosity in there. We're actually sizing it how it should be now. Um. But, uh, I'm sorry, I forgot the original question that.
But the current, current flow right now with the existing bridge, we have impacts on buildings, correct?
Yes, it overtops, yes, it overtops the road and and, uh.
How much?
The side exhibit, Cynthia with the two. Um, with the gray and the yellow shading.
It's like the east third.
So there's that, so either twenty, it was still better.
That one?
Oh, yeah, this one's, you can zoom in a little bit in there. So this orange line is the existing hundred year floodplain. So the water spreads out from the creek to that point. The blue line, it will be the proposed, with the proposed bridge, will be the new floodplain. So that water comes out, this is the proposed road, this is the existing road right here. That water comes out. You can't see it bows back in because this is, the road sits higher. So in this area, the road, the hundred year storm over top. And then the building comes to here, so this water over top and rain right at that eastern portion of.
So it's above a third right now.
I think maybe a fifth, in which we're only even on the eightieth, we're not even, we're just cutting the northeast corner of the building and just. So the existing condition is probably the active flow is slightly more than the proposed eighty foot bridge, fairly comparable. So with each option, we're not making the situation worse. Sixty-five foot bridge options that are a little bit further away from that. That Noah did add, add anything, no, I think that was a great explanation.
How, give me a little bit more, how much? I mean, when you're looking at the overhead picture from one to the next. How big is that, that building going west to east, I guess? Do we have? Cause I'm just looking at the shape of this one to the next.
Yeah.
We talking five feet, not much, I mean.
Yeah, it's, well, the bridge is fifteen foot longer and that line is shifted with the with the abutment length, so it's probably right about fifty feet, I believe that shift. You know, in those two kind of outlined lines.
Right, fifty.
Yeah. It's real close to that.
Yeah, and that's south edge of the southeast corner of the building, you're talking about fifteen foot. And again, that's a. The bottom line is.
It's an idealized line very much, you know, kind of thing.
It may be a little further west, it may be a little further east.
You've all seen flooding, water goes a little bit, you know, it's not in a perfect line, but that's that's the assumption.
We should have a concrete on chance.
And the east side, no difference, are the same. Right?
The east side.
On both of these drawings.
The east side is is the same.
So that.
And there's no building for two options, yeah, it would be.
A little. This is the, because a hundred year actually ponds out and stuff, but the existing hundred years way out here. And then the proposed comes out of this, but that's because this is the existing road. We're grading it down.
Yeah.
So that's changing it, but. This hundred year way out here, that's Bart's property line, so we're not changing anything on Bart's property.
The only reason for the difference in those two lines is the shaping of the road on that corner. It's not, it's not a physical flood elevation change at that location.
Yeah, it's the existing road is being cut out there, which is built up.
Is there a markup or a drawing of? Like what the floodplain looks like if you just put in the existing road, just put in a eight foot bridge?
On the existing road?
Yeah.
We haven't looked at that. I mean, if that's something we want, but the councils previously and all the directions we've had is to. To realign it, realign, improve the intersection with Eagle View and the highway and provide access for. The development to the more of the future development, because that was planned to extend and connect all the lanes, Arden Heights. So if you did, left the existing road in place. Then that, that drive in front of advanced traffic is, it's a private drive, and I don't know if you see it much, but it is. Hell on cars and vehicles, because it's always potholes, and the traffic volume is just gonna get more and more through there. And so, I mean, I haven't talked to the property owners or what their preference is, but. Yes, it's just a bad location, and ultimately, you're, you're either. You're either restricting growth and and development between the north side of this commercial slash industrial area and ultimately Arden Heights. Or you're putting a lot of pressure and impact on the private property owners who have to own and maintain that private drive.
If we did that, um, too, if we left the bridge. Um, on, left the road where it is and put a bridge of that size in there, the reality is, Barb would lose that building.
It would, yeah, it would seem more significantly impact our.
She would, yeah, based on the initial. Yeah, the abutments and the way the riff ramp would have to come out, she would end up losing, in all reality, would probably lose her barn.
Yeah. That's accurate.
Yeah, I'm just looking at it too from a, you said the bridge is like eight hundred and change, right?
Eight twenty-five is, yeah.
Regardless of the.
And that's the bridge structure. It's removal of the existing bridge and the bridge structure, but then the approaches, the pavement, the bill, the redman is all extra.
And you said the whole project's one point eight to two.
In that range for the construction, yeah.
And it's, the the funding is a little different because we have one point five funding from the DOT, but it's just for the bridge.
It was just for construction.
And and approaches.
But I mean, the roadway realignment is on us.
Yes.
Right, so I'm just, I'm just saying, for this realignment, I mean, the the bridge is the bridge, but the realignment, that's a million dollars.
Well, the realignment, the intersections are separate projects, so it's, it's the whole thing all together, and these are utility extensions, like that, because when you have to turn up, you wanted to do the utility extensions. Um, and that's some of the conversations we had with the C I P. We talked about, you know, possibly who will install and extending utilities down there. Um, there's that, you know, Dollar General where that's at, there's a couple make a notch there, I know that they would ultimately like to get sewer and water down there. Um, I don't know about residents on the west side of Stoneman, but. At some point, the city's gonna get sewer and water down there, so this project would.
We would love it. We're talking to the hell, we get all the earth and ground. And we pay extra insurance. At your C I P list, the intersection project, which is a separate project, is two point one seven three six.
So obviously, if we're doing all this, we might get utilities in and beyond, you know, extended beyond this, so then, so that's some of those costs as well.
Shane, what was the final elevation of the new? I guess the highest point is to be the bridge deck, I'm assuming, and then the current road height?
So it's, uh, the high point of the bridge as drawn.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm assuming that's the high point as a current.
It's seven sixty-one and six-two. And then. Uh, the profile exhibits. John, you said seven sixty-one point six-two?
Is the high point.
And that's right over in this area.
Right, so over the.
I thought it's just over here. Yeah, it's just over on the eighty foot bridge on the west side of that. So the the existing range is seven fifty-seven to eighty.
Or the, it's a four foot, yeah.
So it's four foot taller.
It's on color.
At at that point, the low point of the road is closer to the existing road elevation, but still.
The bridge is, the bridge is the low point here, right, right now, it goes up. Both ways. Both ways. It's pretty flat. And you can see. I can see outside of that hundred foot floodplain is higher, that's what you're thinking. It's all the water flows over the local.
What's the criteria between the sixty-five and eighty? How do you, I mean, I'm just curious what, what the criteria is, and has that been? Tucked on yet, or is that something that's?
Yeah.
Um, just to make sure I'm understanding, you're right, you have some why the sixty-five, why the eighty, why?
No, what? Like, what would make you wanna say, uh, council number, yay, we're gonna go with the sixty-five, or? No, we're gonna go with the eight, I mean, which.
Back to those advantages, disadvantages, change that percentage, yeah, it's. I think the fundamental differences come down to a little shorter bridge, a little more, a little less longer maintenance cost, right? You've got less tech to maintain feature. Um, you've got things like, in fact, the abutment is shifted fifteen foot over helps you, you know, kind of control flow a little better from that one side, like with the sixty-five foot bridge. Um, otherwise, yeah, it's really kind of those various points that Shane is.
I can say the one point on the north end was two tenths of what difference or something like that?
Not to the one hundred year for the official regulatory one, it's essentially exactly the same. Uh, by the way, you need to five to the year, you're not gonna be looking at two tenths difference. Really what it comes down to is, we're helping the water so much that the natural ground up there just starts to control things more than anything else, and the bridge is causing less of an impact. And so even though you're making your bridge longer, it just isn't affecting the water surface all that much because we've already opened it up so much compared to how it was.
Shane, are those advantages, disadvantages, are they copies over there on the table that Sue? Got one? Council, any other questions or discussions before I close the public hearing?
Some more properties that are affected by this?
It's not fine design, so, but as early drawn. Uh, three, because one of those city areas is wide. On the north side of the road, zero run left through, so.
And that does. And that doesn't change with the sixty-five lining, it's the same.
What about that fill that went in on the west side of the north side of that bridge? Wasn't there something, then they? They get the inner committing or something, maybe going out there?
So. So during the highway project. They had extra material to add and weigh, so they they coordinated with with Brett. They can fill up that lot, make it more, build more area, building. And I think, uh, it would pass on to the contractor that they needed to stay. I forget exactly what it was, but like forty feet off. I forget exactly what it was, but like forty feet off the top of the pavement. And they ended up going forty feet to the top of the hill and then sloping down, so they approached in that. And that forty foot came from, uh, the previous property owner had a, a quick D N R. You know, where's the floodplain at, and they're like, well, the floodway, you're not supposed to go on the floodway, and they're like forty foot from the top, they made. It wasn't a model or anything like that, they're just like, you know, based on a quick. Analysis, they're like forty foot square, and that's the number. Which is easy to follow, but it doesn't mean it's most accurate. So like, well, you, you, you know, ended up getting filled in and, and Mayor Freedom and Chris and I met with. With, I think it was Ron Breck, and talked to him about it and. He's aware of it and stuff, and we just talked about what we have to address at this bridge. Then when you know modeled it. It, it truly not. So it's, it's not, my understanding, correct me if I'm wrong, or is it's not something we need to worry about?
We, we basically know that even with that fill there, we're still meeting that one foot criteria of the D N Rs, so depending on whether you wanted to consider the basis before that fill was there or after. Either way, we're meeting the criteria needed with the bridge, you got something?
And then you brought in a permit on. You did.
Yeah, with D N R likely did a.
The D N R likely did a simplified analysis, they can kind of look at one spot and do a very simple analysis to come up with something.
A mind mapping thing that shows you the range area to it, they just, you got this. But, yeah, the contract, if I had to say.
Well, any other questions before I close the public hearing? Okay, at this time, I'll go ahead and close. The public hearing and we'll move on to number thirteen, which is a possible motion regarding the two bridge design. Options, and I'll just make one little comment ahead of that. Um. If that decision is made this evening, then that will lead us down the path. To other considerations and additional information that we'll continue to share. Um, with the public. For our future decisions. So. Council, what would you like to do?
I guess I would, uh, since it, um, it's minimal. Cost, minimal impact, it looks to me like it would be. Better to go with the smaller sixty-five foot bridge because it would be less invasive for Barb.
Those disadvantages, then?
Is that a motion?
Yes, I will move that.
Second that.
There's a second. For the sixty-five foot bridge option, all in favor?
All right, all right.
Ah, so no names? Sixty-five foot bridge, John, so, has passed. We'll move on to number fourteen, which is another public hearing, and I've got something to read about this one. This one's a little bit different, number fourteen is, uh, regarding revisions to the third back zoning code. This public hearing actually contains two topics related to zoning, so we're gonna handle it just a little bit different. Than the previous public hearing. And I'm gonna go ahead and open up the public hearing, but here's what's gonna happen. Uh, first, Chris is going to present, uh, the ordinance ninety changes. Regarding, uh, accessory buildings and structures. And then we'll go through the public comments and the council discussion, then Chris will present the changes included in origin. Ordinance ninety-one, followed by public comments and discussion, then after the end of both of those. Presentations and discussions, then we'll close the public hearing and move on to the actual resolution, so Chris, you have the floor. Um, after I open, the public hearing is now open.
All right, thank you there. Uh, so ordinance ninety, um. Came to us. Uh. As a question, it began as a question about shipping containers in the shed. I brought the P M Z, the P M Z spent, they did a couple months on this, um, what works? And in, at the same time, I also brought the question of detached garage slash sheds. Uh, if you look within the ordinance, the setbacks are different for the two in the rear yard. Uh, detached garage has to be ten foot from that rear hotline, the shed has to be ten foot from that rear hotline. So I had a few cases where people wanted to call what I considered a detached garage a shed to make it fit, so I brought that to, uh, the zoning. Committee, uh, I asked them to define detached garage in the shed, put some criteria to it, and you'll see that within section one. Uh, that's what came out of those meetings. Um. And then they also put on the shed, not twenty feet, a hundred ninety-two square feet. Once you get above that, you're to a detached garage. Regardless of what doors are. Um. And then the section two is really just correcting some of the words within the ordinance to match the building code. Uh, the building code uses primary structure, not principal structure, that, that's what you're saying there, it's just grammatical, grammar correction within that. So, I mean, that's really all I have for. Uh, the presentation of ordinance ninety.
So good, did we receive any comments prior to the meeting?
No.
Are there any, um, public comments here? Regarding matching? Is there any, okay, seeing no questions from the public, we'll move on to council discussion. So, the council have any questions for Chris on this?
I did, I can't see, I don't, I don't have the right slide here, but what was the size of the garage that is allowed?
There's no, there are no garages.
There was something, there was something that had, had, um. It had dimensions for both of the structures. It was like twenty-five by thirty-six or something.
So, if you look down here below, you have garages should be allowed in side yards, so within a side yard, this is old. Uh, uh, ordinance that's been in there for a long time. But it's, uh, detached garage in the side yard has some. Language, but we're not changing anything there.
Maybe it's a twenty-four.
Twenty-five or side yard.
Twenty, so it's twenty-four by twenty-five in the side yard?
Yeah, but that's been in the ordinance a long time.
I just wanted to clarify.
So, within this ordinance ninety, just the things that are stricken in red are what we're looking at changing in section two.
Perfect.
Okay.
Any other council questions for Chris before we move on to the changes in ninety-one? Okay, Chris, go ahead and present what you have on, uh, changes contained within ordinance number ninety-one.
All right, and so ordinance ninety-one is addressing concerns over the recent expansion of the light industrial growth, uh, within Fairfax. Um, as you know, last fall, we brought in an additional hundred ninety-seven acres, uh, as. Potential industrial growth, light industrial is what they're asking for in their resoning. Uh, prior to twenty-three, two thousand twenty-three, Fairfax had a hundred and sixty-two plus or minus acres of light industrial, that included, uh, the Bushman site. Um. Alliance, uh, Traverro site and the regen site. And then later in tonight's meeting, on the future land use map, we're gonna be addressing, uh, possibly adding another hundred and, or three hundred and sixty-two acres. The light industrial with the, on the future land use map, so as you can see, the, the. Industrial growth within Fairfax is expanding, expanding quickly. Um. So in the last council meeting, towards the end there, we had some discussion and the, um. Protections to the. Uh, there was some concern of protections to the employees at these sites, and I, I mentioned that that's really OSHA's role, I put some more. Uh, time into that between the meeting, added the, um. Uh, OSHA's. Uh. Information on their website, Iowa has their own OSHA laws, in fact, they, they, again, that's. That's really nothing the city can do about that, it's not our jurisdiction, once a site's there, that's OSHA that governs the employees. And what happens on that site? Two sites terminate Fairfax, they would not be under OSHA's jurisdiction, one would be the post office and the other would be the fire department. Every other business falls within OSHA's jurisdiction. Um, so. Then within this documentation, I have Chief Snaggett, uh, he and I discussed some of the concerns within the. Industrial area, the growth, uh, what the fire department sees as problems coming up in there, and he and I came up with a list of seven items. Um, that the fire department itself think would go a long ways to make that light industrial area a lot safer in the long term. Um, number one and number two on those. Uh, on that list are the things we included in ordinance ninety-one, and those would be non-combustible building structural elements. Within the industrial districts, be the concrete or steel, and then fully sprinkler system requirement regardless of use within the industrial districts. Um. So. Jeff Christensen, the chairman of the. P M Z's here tonight, and I'm gonna let him address the conversation that, or the discussions P M Z's had today, because that's coming up with a type within council meetings, so. Jeff?
Good evening. Um. So, with those concerns and this with the growth. The P M Z is seen in possible, possible future expansion, um. We definitely felt, uh, the type, type one, um. Building material being used, uh, type one construction would be beneficial. Uh, to Fairfax and with the growth of light industrial and then along with the, uh. Breakthrough system, um, to avoid any sort of possible major attacks or things that the, uh. Volunteer fire department would not be able to control. Essentially. Um, then obviously with. The growth recently and then, uh, as Chris alluded to, uh, possible changes on, uh, the, the future land use and expansion there. Uh, we thought it was a good time to present that to the council.
Brother, uh, something, did we receive any? Public comments prior to this meeting?
I had one resident stop, and she was the same resident that had stopped before. And, um, she, she didn't leave anything written, I encouraged her to come, I don't even know if she's here, but, um, she just expressed concern for industrial growth. Fire protection, she mentioned traffic, uh, road improvements, that kind of thing, um, she lives on, uh, Fairfax, well. Know of the questions.
Is there anyone in the public that? Has some questions for Chris?
We're gonna introduce the, I'm gonna introduce the ordinance before. Turned over questions, if you will, please, the changes proposed within your.
Okay.
I haven't went to them yet.
Oh, sorry.
Okay.
That's the current district, you know, that's one of the ones.
All right, so with, within ordinance ninety-one, the things that, uh, we have proposed, um. There's also one other item that I didn't address in the first part, um. Veterinary clinics never show up anywhere within our district uses. Um, the current vet down here, uh. Hartland Vet Clinic is looking to add a cremation service at their current site. That's another thing I brought to planning and zoning to get comments from them, recommendations, uh, planning and zoning. I had no problem with it, they, we added it to ordinance ninety-one. So the first section modified, we'd add to the highway commercial district. Um, permitted uses and structures as follows, veterinary clinics, and I actually put including cremation, cremation services, just so there's no. Um, question as to what's going on there. Um. They actually are considering building a new facility at the entrance to Hartland, right, the development on the north side on the commercial lot. Um, but they want this question answered before, again, we, we didn't have veterinary clinics gave the, the uses of any district. Um, so within the light industrial districts, permitted uses, structures, uh, I don't know if you guys, if those of you that are in council, uh, when the regen site came to us, but. There was some question as to, uh, I lined seventeen within there. Um, and we've decided to add the word recycling at the beginning of that line item to make it clear that. That's recycling, uh, and then again, within the light industrial, P M Z is recommending that we add those veterinary clinics. Including cremation services, that's section two of this ordinance. Section three of this ordinance will be adding a new section within just the light industrial. As followed, these are the building requirements, it would be item I. Uh, all primary and accessory structures in the M one light industrial district, regardless of use, shall be a type one A structure for the International Building Code. Chapter six types of construction. Table six oh one, in which all structural elements of the building are non-combustible. Uh, section, or item two within there would be all primary buildings, regardless of use, shall be equipped with fire protection systems. They include automatic sprinkler systems and emergency alarm systems for the International Code, chapter nine, fire protecting systems. Uh, we give you a section here. Uh, the above referenced, chapter nine, chapter nine shall not. Shall not apply in all, in the M one light industrial within the city, city limits of Fairfax, so, uh, what we're looking for there is.
Chris, what is the type one, what is that?
So I'm gonna get to that.
Okay, all right.
So, um. To Marion's question, is there's gonna be a few more documents in the, yeah, you go to. The chapter six, types of construction that was in the packet?
Is that in the ninety, ordinance ninety-one?
Ninety-one, that's one of the documents. That's the fire department letter. That's the district regulations currently. That's the sprinkler system, we're gonna come back to that one. No, it's chapters, right there, you went past it, chapter six. Uh, so this is, this is a building type in which structural, uh, elements of the building have to be non-combustible. And what we're asking for is a type one A, so the primary structural frame would be a three-hour fighter, fire rating. Any bearing walls, whether interner or exterior are three hour. Uh, non-bearing walls are zero, or constructions a two hour, and then there are constructions an hour and a half, fire rating. And that's for protection of the fire department in the case of fire. Uh, that building can remain standing instead of collapsing, you don't want a fire. And then in the, if you back up, sent here this automatic sprinkler section, nine oh three. Scroll down a little bit, you'll see I got an arrow there, it didn't show up as highlighted. Nine oh three point two, where required, and this is dealing with these automatic fire sprinkler systems. So what that section does within the code is allows for exceptions. Or the requirement of the size of the building or the fire area, what we wanna do is opt completely out of this. So regardless of use, regardless of size, regardless of anything, that building's fire protected with the sprinkler.
So since Cedar Rapids has an exemption for squirt footage.
Yeah, this, this has exceptions for a lot of different things.
And I know we gotta put some fire doors and have them on, fire door and on.
Right, right, and so what we're, what we're saying is, if it's in our light industrial districts, it's gonna be sprinklers.
Okay.
And then, uh, I guess my last comment would be, the buildings that have went up, the Traverro building and the Regen building both meet this criteria currently. So.
So does this exclude post-frame buildings in light industrial then?
It doesn't exclude post-frame, it, it would exclude post-frame wood, though. But still, is. Steel or concrete, essentially. And I guess one other thing to keep in mind, and this is only in the light industrial. District, in fact, no other district.
Thank you, are you okay with everything that's in there, stringent enough, is there anything missing, I mean, I'm sure you.
Now, we've been, well, we've been discussing quite a bit, so, just trying to come up with something that's not. Crazy too much, but enough that.
crazy too much, but enough that it might keep, you know, kinda like the Mourinho thing, you know? It's built for one purpose and then the second person that comes in, you don't know what you're getting. You know, anybody can be there the second time. So it just kinda helps protect that with the sprinkler and the steel frame that, you might not, might not get a big surprise. And like you were saying about the fire doors and people add on and then put a fire door. Fire doors are awesome unless you're the fireman that's on the opposite side of the fire door when it's slammed shut. Cause you're hosed into and then you're standing there with no water and a fire. Or bat.
So would you guys have the ability to go and inspect this? That'd be so awesome.
Well, that's something that we wanna do in the future too.
Yeah, if you look at the.
The bigger we get, you're gonna need to have that.
If you look at the letter from the fire department, that's one of the things. We only addressed in ordinance ninety-one, two of the items of the fire department list. P N Z chose, or I should say kind of plan long-term. Next three to five years, we'll give out the meeting, you read the minutes. To address three or three of those other concerns, which is the annual fire inspections, adopting a fire code and.
It's definitely something that needs to be done for the, you know, in the future, but not during today, but, we definitely have to start looking. If we're gonna keep growing like this, we have to start looking to have somebody to be able to do those fire inspections. If you're gonna keep getting industrial buildings, somebody's gotta be in there.
Some of the other companies, Robbins and some of the other committees that have been growing, they're, you know, the process are having done some of that same stuff. For the fire, please.
Do you not require knockboxes on industrial?
We do. You can have industrials.
Yes.
Industrial require. Just in that direction, just industrial. Those resistance of the P N Z.
So any other public or council comments or?
Uh, funeral, or sorry, the crematory is a commercial, highway commercial district that funeral homes in there, cremation?
Oh, good question. Just curious. I think it does. C two.
Nope, or do we have anything to cremation on? In any of them? I don't really know, but.
Good question. I don't. I don't know. It probably won't show up anywhere.
It does like have a small stack.
Chris checked into some of his facts about it.
Yeah, I took that to P N Z. Its release is nothing. It's clean as clean can be. The reason I brought it, P N Z two, I remember just, just moving on, Jeff Wong, chairman, within a block of where that site would go, and they didn't have any issues with it.
So you wondered with how it's ordered that it could be for funeral home, if they have cremation?
Well, no, we did, we did vet, we cremation service, so funeral home.
That's not a funeral.
Okay, so the wording isn't using, then it's just more cremation. Well, I'll see funeral veterinary.
So sounds like a future P N Z topic is.
Could be, yes.
Okay. But what we're talking about tonight is the changes for the vet clinics and others things. Any other questions? For Chris or? Yeah. Before I close the public hearing. Okay, I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing on both of those topics. So both on ordinance ninety and ninety-one. Public hearing is closed and we're gonna move on to item number fifteen on the agenda. Item number fifteen is to consider the adoption of the changes to ordinance ninety. This is the one remembering back, addressing accessory buildings and structures, so. Consider a motion to introduce and approve the first reading. Second?
Second.
Roll call please.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Motion had passed. Next entertain a motion to suspend the rules requiring that an ordinance be voted on at two council meetings. In regard to, after this meeting regarding ordinance ninety.
Motion.
Second. Aye. Roll call.
Aye, aye.
Cindy, did you ever get any comments on this?
No. So that means we consider a motion for the final passage and adoption of the changes to ordinance ninety. Did you still decide? Someone?
Second.
Roll call please. Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. The changes to ordinance ninety have been approved and we'll move on to item number sixteen. Which is the changes that Chris reviewed on ordinance ninety-one in the much on light industrial area. So consider a motion to introduce the first and approve the first reading of those changes to ordinance ninety-one. Someone? Second? Roll call please. Aye.
Aye, aye. Aye.
Thank you. Now we'll consider a motion to suspend the rules requiring an ordinance be voted on per passage at two council meetings.
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Roll call.
Aye, aye. Aye.
Aye. Thank you. And last but not least, consider a motion for final passage and adoption of those changes in ordinance ninety-one. Someone?
Second.
Roll call. Aye.
Aye, aye.
Thank you. Motion carries on ordinance ninety-one changes. Thank you everyone that spent a lot of time.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you, helpful.
Alright, so now we're moving on to number seventeen, which is a public hearing regarding, revising the future land use map that is part of Fairfax's comprehensive plan. So I'm gonna open the public hearing on this and Chris will present the information.
Alright, thank you. So Cindy, as well, that's our current future land use map. Cindy asked, keep your lawyer on, just keep going down. Right there, that golden area, that yellow is all residential future land use map. We reflect it as residential. That area is very close to the airport. Cedar Rapids is coming from their direction with industrial. And it's pretty horrible. So for both putting in development. So what we've done, a lot of this has to do with the latest hundred and seventy acres. It goes, a new one. You can see seventy-sixth Avenue, there's a drainage basin coming across from seventy-sixth Avenue. At the last meeting, we roughly talked about, there's going to need to be a, pressure, what do you call it, lift station at the bottom of that drainage area. That should be designed to take that old drainage area all the way up to Wright Brothers. And so that's what we're reflecting here on this future land use map. Showing that is industrial and then commercial on the highway privileges. And I should add that we did present this to Cedar Rapids at our meeting about the annexation agreement that we're working on. They hadn't linked anything to any of this space yet. I guess we struck first.
Well, all for the twenty-eight year old in two thousand.
Well, that's fair enough. Of what?
That was all on Fairfax out of the two thousand one.
We have a two thousand one annexation. Cedar Rapids. Did you know that, do you mind?
Well, that's the one that, that's debating whether it's still in effect or not.
He said from two thousand one, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. We took copies of it to that meeting.
That's the old, that's the old one. Yeah, I mean, there's not some two thousand one, but yeah, then it's been planned by Fairfax quite a lot. Well, it wasn't on the future landings map, I guess not, I'd ask you to put it on.
So did we receive any public comments prior to the public hearing? Is there any one in the public that would like to speak? If not, I'll turn it over to the council for questions and discussion. Any questions for Chris?
When you say the drainage, you mean from Wright, Boulevard all the way down to the left station here?
Yeah, the left station should be down there by the graphic.
Right, right. We talked about it in the last.
Right, you from Wright Brothers down.
Right, right, no, like you said, actually crosses Wright Brothers, but there's no reason for us to get that aggressive. This would add another, I presented three hundred and sixty-two rough acres of light industrial or industrial in the future, which is a lot.
Any other questions, council, for Chris? Or the attending P N Z members?
Well, I'm the new one. You put that commercial bumper in there. Looks like we can't put residential light industrial.
Right, yeah.
I'm sorry, say, yeah, there's a drainage right there.
Yeah, that's, that's down here, but then up here with Wright Brothers Boulevard is now, there's property.
Yeah.
Where their houses would be on Boulevard.
Yeah, but this is the future land.
Future map.
Along. Letting document.
Any other questions from council or discussion? Before I close the public hearing? Alright, you're still looking. You're good?
Yes.
Alright, I'm gonna close the public hearing at that time, this time, and we'll move on to item number eighteen. To consider resolutions to approve the revisions to the future land use map, which is part of Fairfax's comprehensive plan. So I will entertain a motion to adopt that resolution.
Motion.
Second. Roll call please.
Aye. Aye, aye.
Aye. Thank you. Moving on. I think we're done with public hearings, so we'll move on. To item number nineteen. Consider resolution concerning electric facilities extension agreement with the line energy for new street lights.
This is agreements that they sent us, that they were supposed to have a sign before they put the street lights in on the left of your road. And they go, oh. So the lights are in.
So this is after.
This is after.
What lights, that over there?
We did talk about not spending the money for the more expensive fold that they put those in.
Oh.
No, hopefully we aren't cleaning that way.
Did we?
Yeah.
I don't know. I, I thought we said that they're out there and it doesn't really matter.
Right, and it was a few thousand dollars less than it's like hours.
I think we did, but it doesn't matter now because they've been.
And I can tell you that originally we had in the budget a hundred and thirty thousand for this. And if their calculations are right, it's gonna be just a little less than forty thousand, a little less than thirty-five thousand. I'm still questioning their calculations that they put a tax on it that I want them to remove, but, I won't write the check till we finalize the final amount, but even all they wanna charge, it's less than forty thousand.
And he had budget one thirty.
One thirty. Someone? Second?
Second.
Roll call please. Very active.
Aye, aye.
Thank you. Moving on to item number twenty. Consider motion for final passage and adoption of ordinance eighty-eight. Amendment to the zoning map. So this is our final. We had already gone through the first and second. So this is the third and final. This is the rezoning request of Iowa Land, correct, Sam Kim?
Yes.
That we have carried forward for a couple of months to be sure there wasn't any public comments or things that we wanted to consider. In the works.
Besides the, was there one walk-in that didn't go on record?
Well, it was probably that, that same thing that I mentioned when they were asking about the changes in the industrial and also this. She talked about both. Yes.
So I'll consider a motion for the final passage and adoption. Ordinance eighty-eight, someone?
Second.
Aye.
Aye, aye, aye.
Thank you for that final adoption. Move on to number twenty-one. Discussion of possible motion concerning a commercial sign permit at three oh eight Vanderbilt Street.
Yeah, so the Water Works is looking for new signage. They're replacing one existing sign and they're gonna be adding two smaller signs. Everything's in order. I, I recommend that you go ahead and approve this.
Any questions for Chris? Someone?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye. Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries. Move on to number twenty-two, resolution to approve the final plan and site plan for Huska's first and second edition.
Oh yeah, this came in, it's East Central Road and West Post Road. On the corner there, we do a simple subdivision. This is outside of any growth decision for Fairfax, so I recommend you. This is something the, the green aisle and.
Someone?
Second.
Roll call please. Aye.
Aye, aye.
Thank you. Number twenty-three. Discussion of possible motion concerning the hiring committee's recommendation for the public one works position. Is Eric here today? He's just hanging in there. Good way to get introduced. So in your package, you saw the hiring committee's recommendations. Do you have any questions for the committee? Nick was on the committee.
Curious on a range of applicants. That's awesome to have thirteen applicants. I mean, would they, all applicable to the job or? Good applicants, I guess, if you want to pressure that.
Not all thirteen, but all four that we interviewed.
We pulled out five of the thirteen applications, yeah. What's it called? One of them already got hired. They were down four. And of the four, they were all real life series. It was pretty happy.
Yeah.
Thanks, Bryce.
Yeah, when I saw that, that's for, my opinion, that's for reflection on Fairfax. I think we can have that many.
Which in the past, no, we will say that. In the past history, in the last several years, we have not had that. So this time it was, where?
Well, we tried a little different marketing strategy this time when we went online.
We've done that.
The indeed, but that's where we got a lot of. But we still got a lot of work last time, so.
Yeah, it was gonna be built for change.
So I'll entertain a motion to approve this hiring of Eric. And his start date would be tomorrow. Might as well say right.
You're locking up.
And the committee is recommending, uh, the twenty-two fifty an hour to begin. Based off of qualifications and job market. Some of it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Right, aye, aye, sir.
Welcome, Eric. Moving on to number twenty-four. Um, this is making the, um, employee compensation for Eric official, and it also includes, um, the library's wage adjustments, correct, Sam Kim? And I've highlighted all of them that changed. Because they, theirs weren't included last month as they were waiting for council to make their decision. So now they are included.
I think that's just all suit.
We did not follow suit, well, they did not, or my report did not. It says up above that they went two and a half percent plus two dollars a month.
Plus two bucks.
Well, that was because when we looked at other. Staff. Pay rates for the city. I have had, I had two myself under the minimum of what our most recent hire was. And Joel was like fifteen cents over, but he's been with us for ten years. They were trying to get staff more and why would for other city people. And I, I mean, I asked that to look at it. I, I was totally shocked, I'm pretty good. Really not what I was, I mean, I did not expect that.
So we'll consider a resolution to, um, approve the, the resolution with the employee compensation adjustments.
Okay.
Second?
Second.
Roll call please.
Aye. Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Resolution adopted, number twenty-five. Discussion of possible motion concerning a quote for Cracks Speedway, Lynn.
So Cracks Speedway, end of the column, uh, please do it, probably, or, uh, I got a visual, please do it, which was the same as last year's bid. They didn't change anything from the old code, I never did get one back from Kelly. But compared to the last time they voted, it's still ways to get higher. So I kind of recommend going to Luster unless you want to pay away to see if we can hit that.
No increase over last year?
No increase over last year, or the, the Cracks. So when, when you even sent the quote for it, you just kind of copied last year's bid and sent it out. Yeah, he told me able to phone it, it's the same, it's good this year, and like, oh, maybe you put something in the right. So if they just sent it out, it's all the work, all she is. It was pretty good, and we had a couple questionable things, but we talked through it, it was fine. And a couple of us, when they were blowing out so many cracks, left a little degree, and then it's like, oh, like, hey, get back here, you got to clean that up, and so forth, they did. Wasn't thrilled, pleased initially with that, but they resold it.
Mr. Knopf, let me give the, what's your, if another quote, wait, I don't, I'm fine with it.
I would say if it's holding their price from last year, it would be tough.
I don't think anybody beats it.
Judge, if you saw the other quotes, I would say not.
So I think you go with it.
So need a motion?
A motion.
Second?
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye.
Thank you, motion carries, number. Discussion of possible motion on quotes for street sweeping, Lynn.
This is our annual spring cleaning up the sand and so forth, the weather that got used in the winter. Oh, yeah, the going every year and the skin feathers again. And both of them increased there, but not much, uh. You know, five dollars for building increased last year, and it looks like only three dollars of increase from Lister. So, like, they're, they were good. I can't really have a head no problem with that, one year we, I don't remember how many years ago, you remember, Eric?
It's been a while.
Four or five years ago, we had an issue, which, you know, per hour, you have to really kind of watch until they go over. Do their time, so as long as you pay attention and keep track of them.
Yeah, as long as you show them you're paying attention.
Yes. So that's the only time we've ever had an issue, so in the years ago, but ever since then, we've never taken that problem.
Is it, is it appropriate to ask and put the number of hours in there?
Well, they do when they build it out, but i- it's one of those things, it's kind of hard to get year to year, depending on how much sand was put down through the winter, and how much. How much is out there on the street, so it is, it's hard to, I guess, figure that in. We have a rough guess, and then our budget kind of covered that with budget factor, so. Normally, what's a day, Brian, two days, three days? And last year they took, they brought in two sweepers, so they get it quicker and faster and pretty quick.
Depends on how much we do, too.
Yeah, and what we try to do, we are, it's, it's not a street sweeper, but it's a, um, sweeper on our, uh, skid loader. So it's just a pickup room, but a small bucket, so we try to get, let's close door shop, some of the old part of town, some of the stuff that. Easier for us to get, they have nuisance for them, so that kind of helps out with that process.
So what are you recommending, Lynn?
Um, I would say go Lister again for two.
So when you send out quotes, obviously from year to year, last year, this year. You sent them out to a multiple ones, but these are the only ones that you tend to get back.
The last years, this is all I can do, uh, most of the time, others don't even want to deal with it, uh, so it's kind of hard to get this on it.
Okay.
Want to change a motion?
Yes.
For a closing.
We did, we, we went through them last year.
Yeah, last year, they've done.
And this other contracts. Work, work order proposals, look every time, I was. I would be a little, uh, hesitant to sign something that says per hour.
No NTV on it?
Yeah. Well, it's twenty-four hours, you pay twenty-four hours, it takes some time. That's what you, they've never drove their feet or anything, it would be a problem.
And that's part of just being, watching them and so forth.
Right.
If you do put a max on it, if they don't get everything cleaned up, then what do you do?
Skids here.
You know, it's, it's a catch home, too.
Is there a lot more streets in the redevelopment versus last year, or not really? Was that all, was that all board last year?
Last.
We did it last year.
Okay.
For that development.
Yeah, we went to, um.
So like, if you wanted to, you could say a not to exceed number without approval, so when that, once they bump up to that number, they don't go over without getting approval.
Yes, and that's the gap in that, too.
Yeah, I mean, that's what, that's how you would get around.
That protects us, because if they just came back, says we don't took this, I have no idea what wrong this takes, yeah, but, you know, double what it was legally, what are we gonna do? Like, okay, so get that lost, so, yeah, but to give a, I mean, they, they know, I mean, linear feet the roads are, they should have a.
Rubbing that's down all the days, yeah.
And the other, the other quote had that in there.
Yep.
So can we add that, Lynn? A not to exceed without approval?
I don't know.
You have a number in mind, or could we look at last year's and?
I would probably look at last year's.
Yeah, because the difference would be like, some years it's, it's, you have more salt and sand and stuff out of the roads because we have more ice and more snow. And other years it's not as bad, so it's not always apples to apples every year when they come to claim. So it makes it a little hard for them to figure that out.
And this year, even if you were patching up some of the side, damage done for the plow. Boy, the sand looks, doesn't matter, worse than any other year currently, but we haven't had rains. So it may look worse right now because we haven't had the rain, okay, that's all that, well, it's.
Get a slow driver.
Yeah.
It, it, you don't know.
Can you just word it to leave it up to Lynn's direction? That they're ours, the number of hours, we'd have to, certainly do that, that they, that it's in his direction.
I mean, that's what it is all the time anyway, it's just we're putting it in motion.
Is that a motion by, from Marion?
Sure.
Oh, no, I can't.
Oh, right.
She's abstaining, anybody else wanna make the. Sam, okay?
So, recommendations?
With those included recommendations, yes? All in favor? If somebody's saying.
I'll say it.
Second, sorry. Now all in favor?
Abstaining.
Thank you. Thanks, Lynn.
Thank you.
Moving on to number twenty-seven. We've been discussing some possible changes to the newsletter policy and in your packet. You have the where that's currently stands, the attorney has reviewed it, provided comments. Hope you have a feel for this, is this what we were looking for? Any questions?
Last time I mentioned about just tool review and. We okay with how that word is at very end, City of Fairfax staff and or mayor show many determination. We okay with how that, that means.
I think so, I mean, I don't wanna have to hold stuff up because we have to look at something. Not, I'm not really gonna issue, but.
Yeah.
We can always make changes, I guess.
All motion. Second.
Roll call please.
Aye.
Aye.
Carries, move on to item number twenty-eight. Resolution to approve a revised twenty-eight E agreement with the city of Hale for building department services. We always do this at this time of year after we have approved payroll changes. And, um, so this just has, um, sorry, I'm trying to find it to open it up to, um. This has changes to Chris's rate. And I have sent it to Palo, they, their meeting is next Monday night, if I had to approve that.
So it's two fifty is where it's going on from last year to this year is the, and that's based off the two point five plus any extra cents, or is that already calculated?
Yeah, it, um, so I take as hourly and then I add, um, benefits and stuff to come up with the new total. Right, yeah.
Are they any closer to getting to someone?
They're not gonna get someone's.
They just gave us.
They want, no, they want to keep me for the zoning, they, they have in county to do the building services, but they want, they're keeping me for the zoning. And whatever else that entails, you know.
Minnesotaans.
I didn't expect that, then you don't wanna keep me.
Well, and John, she do, they, Lynn County does new construction, don't you do other permits or no?
Well, just like a second water meter, we don't, county fence permits, fill, grade, culverts. This, the stuff that does, deals with the site, that all, Lynn County does all the building permits and all the rental. They won't do just a portion of any, but we've had several meetings with the county and then was set up. All of that that it looks like Portland's gonna leave town any of those. It's the one builder of two thousand.
A pre-basics wall, when it's a pass. Is that the pre-bad contractor?
Uh, it was, yeah, uh, Palo took the steps in their zoning to require a two-by-six exterior wall. And then did away with zero lots. That's, you know.
So if we adopt this resolution, we don't expect Halo to say no to it, but if they did, we back to the drawing board? Well, they'd be hiring somebody else.
I mean, Chris would still be on our staff.
Right.
Second, you, give me a little notice.
Aye.
Aye, aye.
Thank you. Number twenty-nine, discussion of website proposals, Cynthia? So, um.
Mike's not here.
Yeah, Mike's not here, which is unfortunate, so I contacted the company that, uh, they use, and he wanted me to reach out to them. And i- if you remember, we were getting ready to adopt a, an in, I think a three-year step up in price with our, the current company that hosts our website. And he made a comment, well, our website hosting is. Much smaller per month. Well. It is, but in order for them to do this, they want a huge amount to redesign everything. You know, the hosting is cheaper, but the, the design of it is, is, yeah, is way more expensive.
Would be your rate of return and take a while.
Right.
Yeah.
So. What's the number for the, the upgrade, the redesign of the site, do you remember? I'm trying, I'm sorry, that distracted my thought.
It was nineteen-five.
Okay, yeah, I was, I was thinking it's about twenty thousand. So we didn't even put it on for possible motion, because if you're going to spend that kind of money, I think you should get more than one company. My recommendation, um, is that we go back to the company that we have. But, you know. I'm at my point in the career that I don't wanna do a website revamp and have to pay twenty thousand dollars for it, if it was free, maybe, but. Um, but, so that's entirely the council's decision. But, you know, you take that twenty thousand and spread it out over the years, you know, mix up for the, because their hosting fee, that includes. You know, we wanna redesign something, as long as it's still within our template, that, that, uh, the level of template we have, you know, they help us out, they, you know, uh, they give us support. The customer service is, is all, all of that is included in that.
What was the rate going to for monthly hosting?
Well, they just do it annually, and so we, then the previous, all for the new people, I think it's like a hundred and fifty or two hundred?
Per month?
Yeah. But, yeah. Compared to our current is, or what that. Well, we weren't paying a thousand, but that company hadn't raised it forever, and a new company bought them, and so they wanna work up to. Five thousand, I think, a year. But I have to double check that.
There's like three or four different plans, I think, they had, but.
Yeah, well, and they were willing to take three years to step it up, up to that point, but.
So do we need to make a decision on this tonight, or can we, shall we let Mike weigh in?
Absolutely.
Yes, let's just.
We don't even have the possibility of motion.
Then let's, let's.
That being said, was there a, do they wanna sign an agreement at certain point or current?
Current, um, what we have now will go through, um, the end of June, so we have to, you know, make a decision. Yeah. And if you're gonna go to a new company, of course, it, it takes them some time to design it and get it in place, so, yeah. Okay, so no action on this topic. Move us on to item number thirty, a resolution to update one-two-five plans, Cynthia will talk about that. So this, this is an IRS designated plan, so that, um, uh, we have Aflac, Globe Life, Colonial Life policies, the employees pay a hundred percent. Through payroll deduction, and this allows, um, some of the policies to be taxed, pre-taxed, and like the, uh, short-term disability can't be, um. Well, I guess it could be, but you don't want it to be within your earnings, it'd be taxable. So we have a few employees, a couple of employees that have. After-tax policies and pre-tax policies, but, um, the insurance agent that we have sent an updated, um, plan, and they said, oh, you don't really have to do this each time. And I said, ah, when you say IRS is involved, I wanna do an updated resolution each time we get an updated plan, so that's all it says. Some.
Second.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
I didn't hear the second. All right, so those are all eyes, okay. Thank you. Number thirty-one, this is the resolution, and what we're doing here is strictly setting a public hearing date. Regarding our new requirement handed to us from the state. Um, to have a public hearing for the tax statements that will be mailed out. Early March. Well, Lynn County has to have it mailed by March twentieth is the deadline in the code. Which means we cannot have the hearing before March twenty-fifth, you picked March twenty-sixth. As the evening that you will have two special meetings. This first one that we're setting the hearing date will be, according to the new budget law. Can only have one topic on the agenda, and that is a public hearing about this tax statement. That they hope everybody's gotten in their mail by the twenty-sixth. Then you have to adjourn and even have another meeting then. To set the public hearing date in April for the full budget, but you can't do that till you have the public hearing. So you'll have two short special meetings on March twenty-sixth. We're anticipating short anyway on the tax statement one, it's a public hearing, so.
Yeah.
The public could come with questions regarding the mailed tax statements. And the reason you have to set it tonight rather than at your March fifth meeting is because then I can enter the dates and stuff into the state. Budget software, and that's where Lynn County grabs the date and our levy amounts to put into their tax statement. This is a new requirement. So our motion, to set the public hearing date to March twenty-sixth.
So moved.
Any second?
Second.
Roll call, please. Come?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. All right, item number thirty-two, mayoral appointment of city council liaison. Back when I was first on the city council. Uh, we had a council member that served as liaison to the library board, and Marianne remembers that, she does remember that. And that, I think when that council member was no longer with the council, that just kinda went away. And we didn't have a replacement for that. And I. Had an inquiry about possibly creating this relationship again between the, the council and the library. And visit with the library board about that, and they were all in favor of that. And so at this time, I would like to go ahead and appoint. Council member Dan Losniak as our liaison to the Fairfax Library Board. And he and the library board can figure out the details of that. So, thank you, Dan. And that moves us on to number thirty-three.
Budget.
Cynthia wants to go through line by line. No, she has some highlights and some information that she still needs from the council in order for us to move forward with.
Yeah, so I, I think Shane gave everybody an updated, slightly revised, uh, one-year capital improvement plan. Joan and I had met with him about this, and we kind of asked, made some requests. So it, just as an example, for the bridge project, you can see over in the notes now, he's added what the total cost of the project would be. And, uh, cause many of these projects either started this year. Or they're continuing into fiscal twenty-sixth, so we wanna kind of, you know, if you say yes. To this part of it, I'm getting it started, such as you already designed the church street, if you're gonna start the construction. Design, you know, in the final design, then you need to know that the total. Cost of the project is whatever it is, see that? Two point eight five four million. And. Previously, you had kind of picked the projects that you wanted to do. And so, like, he's made some revisions based on that. Shane, do you have any other things to update, to add or point out on this?
Um. Not really a. There is a five-year plan on the second sheet, that kind of highlighted the project seven, you can. So the numbers there would be the additional amount. That would have to be funded into next year. But you take those two numbers and add them together, then they could. Add them, uh, highlighted numbers in the notes on the one-year, two, twenty-five. This one year, two.
So, um. The. Intersection project, you know, we have some funds on hand, but the. Fiscal twenty-five estimated cost of five thirteen, so we'd need three hundred and fifty-two, three. Um, the new well construction, we have a planning and design loan, we have Lynn County's ARPA grant, we have the city's ARPA money. Um, so. Three hundred and sixteen is the estimate that we would need in addition, and that can be. Written in an SRF construction loan, and the planning and design will just roll into that, and it'll all be one SRF loan, so we. What we have now is a planning and design one, but it really is the start of, you know, finishing out that project. Um, Church Street, uh, five hundred and ten, we have a hundred and twenty in the previous bond money. So we would need an additional three hundred and ninety. Water main extension, we've already bonded for that, we have that money on hand, Vanderbilt, we have that money on hand. Um, Eagle View Drive Water Main Extension Project, ninety-one thousand. This water supply, uh, design, the one million, one fifteen, I would assume that that would also be an SRF. We actually, in part of our planning and design, SRF right now has a little bit of the preliminary design. As associated with well number four project, but this is actually the treatment, right?
Yeah.
Oh, and number, and well, number five design, okay. Um, the culvert at Angle Road, I wasn't exactly certain if it was an in or an out. So, you'll have to let me know.
And you talked last, with last time Shane that, you know. They've been asking for last few years and considering what's going on south in the industrial area that. We might be asking for them, so.
Yeah, I, I, that's what I thought, so we left it on there, but. And then the park restrooms, um, Joey had requested two, but you had cut it down to, uh, one at Hartland Heights. For a hundred and thirty-five.
Should that be held off until the area to the north develops?
The restroom at the park?
You talked about last two, very end.
No, 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 I'm saying the restrooms at the park. People that visit the park right now, they all live there.
Yeah, I, I, I don't think it should be put off, and I'll tell you a couple of reasons, one is all it's gonna do is increase the cost of it. That it's eventually gonna go in there anyway. In addition to that, it is, uh, uh. A bus stop. Um, and it gets a lot of use right now, so. That's, that's my feeling on the bathroom at that park.
Yeah, we bust up down Applewood, too.
We don't have a park at Applewood, though, we do have a park here, and it was stubbed for a restroom. I think it's, I think this is the right time to, to put it in.
We're saying every year the weight just goes up.
Every year you wait, yeah, it just continues to go up.
It's, it's a neighborhood park, it's not intended to be a destination park, it's really. I mean, not to say you won't get people there, but it's not like the complex where you're gonna have people come all over. The scrap metal area going there.
Even if you had parking spots, what, we have four?
I think we have, I think there's a couple plus to hand.
Yeah, pretty minimal parking. That's one, too.
Yeah, it was my understanding at the last meeting that we were to remove the one at the other park, which I think was Prairie Creek.
Prairie Creek.
Uh, and leave in Heartland Heights.
I believe it was said that hippies can be in the creek.
Yeah, yeah, so it's be drawn, keep up and just continue to use bushes.
Yeah, Mike wouldn't even use the budget.
And then the fifty thousand for the pavilion at the Heartland Heights, I think the comment was just, let's try to get it done, or supposed to.
Question, what about using loss for that?
Oh, yeah, we haven't even, yeah, we're gonna, that's my next topic.
But using that fifteen out of the lost one?
No, she's got a whole nother topic on that.
Sorry.
Yeah, yeah, sorry, we're getting ahead of her. Good idea. So we had Shane add about the liver expansion, but that is earmarked for lost already from last meeting's discussion. And then the sanitary sewer, this is a multi-year program, this is just. Doing a portion of it to keep it below the competitive quotes limit, I believe. And then the Heartland Heights pedestrian bridge participation of three hundred and sixty. And then the Heartland Heights Trail, um, for a hundred and ninety-one. Those were our understandings of the capital projects that we were trying to. Work in and point towards.
So is that trail part, all of it, or just part of it up to where we were gonna stop?
I believe the one ninety-one was to the north end, we stopped short of the Beverly Road extension, you know.
It goes past the head bridge and just up and stops?
Yeah, I don't have last month's CIP, I mean, but.
I just can't tell from this, it's.
Fifty thousand out of that, we stopped short, we just got, we just got across the creek.
And went across the other culvert or whatever.
So then the, the, the city staff could have access to the entire property.
Okay, all right, so that goes all the way up.
Could come down a little bit if, if you wanted forty to fifty thousand dollars, but. Yeah, I'm pretty sure that one ninety, one ninety-one, whatever that was, was the. The full trail.
That'll get you from the road to the bridge, and from the bridge, up and around in the north.
Yeah, and it would stop, you'd stop, yeah. Seventy-five hundred feet short of the Beverly Road extension, which isn't there yet.
Yeah, you might as well not go that far if it's gonna turn anyway.
One of the challenges that I, Hannah Cynthia, that we've been working on is. Can we? Do these? But to an amount not to exceed the amount that we're paying off on our current bonds. So that we don't go further in depth, or remains status quo. Looking towards the future, we know as far as water and sewer projects. That probably is impossible, but. A nice goal, we don't go any further on our, our geo bonds.
Do you even buy it now because we know it's gonna get bigger later?
Well, next year it's gonna be more, because if you're starting church street construction, you're saying yes, it's over two million. And the intersection project is over two million, so.
So, so next year, if, if you keep all the projects on there as is, for the, for the one year. Next year, you're gonna be looking at, uh, about five million. Need to complete those projects, five million, forty-four thousand. And then you throw in the second phase of the sanitary sewer point of parent lining, which we have earmarked at a hundred and ninety thousand, you're big five million, two hundred and thirty-four thousand. And obviously, the bridge and that intersection are tied together, you can't just, you want to not do the other, you can't do both. Truly, Church Street is the only one you can really pull out of that.
I would almost say pull it then, because we've always been really responsible about keeping. Bringing stuff on and stuff falling off and keeping levels to where we can.
Pull, pull.
Well, we, we've done, I mean, consistent, I've been there for a long time, we've done a really good job of. You know, keeping things at a pretty even keel, and I don't wanna bite off a whole big. Because if something else comes up, then you're screwed.
Shane, what would we have to do for the Church Street project, for that sanitary part? So what would, do you know what the.
Six hundred thousand, I think, and then we'd have to go into the. Water supply treatment and.
So that would be adding like six hundred thousand to that SRF?
Yeah, I, I mean, I think some of that hadn't gotten moved in, it would have just that amount some. But it'd be the SRF, it would be a geo bond.
Didn't we go by last budget? Because thinking ahead that it's.
Yeah.
Bigger, and so.
Yeah, well, it's like between the bridge cost and the intersection cost, and then you've got the well cost. And all the costs associated with the treatment, that's huge. And we have, again, you can't move forward with the well and the, without the treatment and. So, but those two things alone, that's a lot of money. The other thing that Cynthia's been looking at, leading into the lots discussion, is are there other ways to fund these things other than farming?
So one thing I was thinking of is, you know, as we talk about some of these expenses, water prices potentially gonna have, I should say, potential that will have to go up. Is. Not that anyone wants to do this on exercise, but. Go through the budget, take things out. You know, if it's gonna be painful for the citizens, it should be painful for everyone here.
Well, can I continue on the money flow so that you know what your base of, okay, so that, uh, this was in the packet, it's a report on a previous bond. And I have, uh. The Church Street design part was in that bond, and that's complete. And then the water main project, and we've talked just recently with Shane, I think that's a pretty good estimate. Um, part of it's paid, um, part of it's not, of course, NPO trailer pull. Brian asked if there were any bond funds left over that could be used for well three rehab, Brian, you wanna talk about that, touch it?
So it was mentioned then, back in December on our wish list, whatever, that, uh. Well, three, when it was last done, was done previously at seven years, they said not to exceed seven years when you go to do it again, because the. Down pipe at that time was almost rusted through, which if that happens when they pull it out, it's really, really bad day. Well's done, so. They require, or sort of suggested, don't go any longer than seven years, we're at seven years. And, uh, so I've been in the process of getting my quotes for it, so it's the last two times that, well, the last two times they recommended every seven years, and now we're at seven years, and so. Which involves new pump, new downpipe wire. Back of, bow, uh, check bow.
So it's rusting the casing?
Yeah, yeah, the downpipe, yeah.
The bottom.
It's just the, the makeup of the water, if there's electrolysis in there that, that, um, is.
So are you, you replaced part of it's rusting here, or what?
You replaced it all.
Okay.
Everything gets replaced.
A lot of it was like seven years ago.
Would it cost? I can't remember, the current ones in the thirty to thirty-five area now.
Oh, so you've re-cased it two times already?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Well, not the casing, it's the downpipe.
The downpipe.
The casing, the casing's original, eight-inch casing.
Yeah, since I've been here, it's been twice.
So it's just the downpipe getting all the way down there?
The pipe that actually feeds the water from the pump.
So the last time they pulled it up, I think it was the last, the bottom three sections were barely hanging together, and they were like, oh, boy.
So, um, I put fifty thousand in there, um. And then the left-of-year road, um, project is complete, so that would leave about three hundred and eleven thousand, six sixty-four in that bond available. Um, and the bond purposes was planning, designing, constructing streets, sanitary sewer system, stormwater drainage system, water utility system. Um, trails, sidewalk improvements. Street lighting and signalization, so it includes a lot of things, does not include parks. So there's three hundred and eleven thousand and change that you could pick. Some of these projects to fund. And.
And, uh, then there's another.
You got the sewer lining on there?
Yeah, right. And then there's another, uh, I put a lost report in here. And I'll look at my paper one, cause that's hard to read, and, and so, um, um, this top box shows the current ba- um, budget. And you can see that it, um, shows three hundred and thirteen, ninety-nine yet to spend. Um, but the highlighted things, um, the hundred thousand for the truck will not be spent, that's supposed to be a carryover to fiscal twenty-five to build up to two hundred thousand. So that's not gonna be spent this year. And Joe doesn't know about the signage, um, or the parks building. And so he's actually put them in, they're, right now, they're in both places. So in estimating our June balance, I assumed that those would not be spent because if we're gonna put them in twenty-five, we're not gonna spend them in twenty-four. And then the, uh, Veterans Memorial, um, that thirty thousand roughly is kind of what was left of what the city initially planned of eighty, but, um, it's complete, the Legion has, um, donated funds on hand for ongoing maintenance, I mean, we have staff, you know, mow or clean or whatever, but that's just in our parks, uh, wages. Um, so I don't think that we're gonna spend that balance in this year. I put, I brought the thirty-one thousand forward, but I really think that we could remove that, and i- if anything came up, I think it would either be a Legion, um, maintenance or a city, um, Legion discussion if we wanted to add something or hand something, and then we would know and we could do a budget amendment. So if you see, um, at the bottom of the sec- of the fiscal twenty-five, it says there's three hundred and fourteen thousand, three forty-six unassigned. And that is leaving the hundred thousand reserve that we would like. And we could add the thirty-one thousand to that, so that takes that up to three hundred and forty-five thousand. In lost funds that could be assigned to a project. And our lost purpose is any lawful purpose.
What was the arbitrary number we always wanted to keep?
A hundred thousand, and that is keeping that. So that leaves the three hundred and forty-five thousand.
That's leaving a hundred thousand and a hundred thousand for the truck? Or that's just?
Oh, no, that's taking out all the things, the two hundred thousand for the truck in fiscal twenty-five, it's taking out all the things that we currently know we want out of fiscal twenty-five budget and leaving the hundred thousand reserve. Yep. So, three hundred and eleven from the bond and three hundred and forty-five from lost. And then you can pick projects to put that towards, and then come up with a smaller loan.
Say use the upper bond or sewer point. For various. Something here.
And I will mention one other thing, um, today I just, towards the end, I quickly went through and kind of looked at, um, revenues to expenses and what we've currently got. And here are the red flags that jumped out to me, of course, water debt service. The revenue is two oh two six and the expenses are three forty-four, five twelve, hundred and forty-one. Um, I know we, we transferred over a hundred and ten thousand, um, in this current fiscal year to try to make up the deficit. I've been talking about the water debt fee for several years now. It's, I think, thirteen fifty and the last time I calculated, it should have been at seventeen. So, um, the regular water, um, has a net of twenty-one thousand. So obviously not enough to make that up, so if you transfer from the regular, you're gonna eat into the new revenue.
Cause I were, I was asking you to see what our break-even point would be? Last month, last week, or wherever, last meeting?
What?
For that, that's sorry, the water debt service fee or the trash, I don't remember, for the water debt service fee? Where our revenue needs to be paid up?
That's what I'm telling you, you need another hundred and forty-one thousand.
That's seventeen, raise it.
Thir- thirteen fifty to seventeen, and, and I haven't, I would need to calculate that again, cause that was what I had calculated previously. So I need to make sure the seventeen is still accurate.
There'll be some moderation in both water and sewer during, due to our staffing change, however, correct, with Kevin's retirement and?
That's already worked into.
You already left that in?
Yeah, yeah. And then sewer, uh, regular sewer, uh, the revenue is over the expenses by about seventy-five thousand. The sewer debt, um, as it sits right now, it's about thirty thousand short, twenty-nine, three ninety-eight. Um, which, we haven't raised that one for a little while, so we may need to bump that up, up slightly. Um, but the good thing is that's paid off in like two years, so.
Sewer debt is?
The Big Lagoon one, the big project, there's some other smaller projects, but. And I wanna double check, uh, the first time through my numbers, I, I always like to get away from a little bit and make sure that I've considered everything, but this is, I think those are accurate. Garbage, um, expenses are about twenty-three thousand, five hundred over revenues. I may have mentioned that before. I think, uh, last fiscal year, we transferred twenty-eight thousand, so pretty consistent from the general fund into there to cover it.
Didn't we just raise the rates on that?
Just to cover, because the contractor's raising. Um, I think we went from, I looked at that today, we went here.
We should have went a little over to kind of capture.
Just a little, we went a dollar sixty over the contractor, and I think we were a dollar forty-seven now or something, a dollar forty-something now. So we gained a little bit, but not much. The big concern is road use, and I've already given Lynn the bad news.
We thought we were doing good on road use.
Well, we have the biggest balance that we've had in a long time, current, our current balance is three hundred thousand, which, uh, since I've been here. And part of that is we've shifted, um, some of the, uh, street work into lost. I, if you see your proposed lost, um, budget has sixty thousand in it. But, uh, the proposed road use expenses are a hundred and thirty-three thousand more than the other news. So I got Lynn to look at it and see what he can reduce the up.
Skin here, just wait, without looking at it far, I already, it's all important, that didn't help much.
You know, another option, um, I know we have, uh, part of the seal coating and street sweeping and street painting in the road use, you could move those to lost. Okay, so thirty-one thousand, you got twenty-five thousand in chip and seal, six thousand in sweeping, and sixty-five hundred in paint, um, striping, so that would be almost forty thousand, um. You know, it's gonna be a.
So if you get forty there, then like roughly we've got another thirty maybe.
So we might be halfway there. Um, so when you're considering your lost budget, keep in mind that thirty-seven, five for road use projects. Um, and then the general, um, first pass-through is very negative, but that's because we're using like the fire department budgets out of their savings, which is already on hand, and the parks does, and the library does, I mean, um. So I think we're about forty thousand, um, upside down in the general, but again, I wanna make sure that there aren't any other, um, funds on hand being used that I'm not considering, so I wanna verify that. But there's so many areas in the general fund that I think we'd be, if it is four, in fact, forty, I think we can find that pretty easily. Um, let's see, the other thing I would bring to your attention is the parks, um, has excess bond funds right now. Um, a hundred and eighty-seven thousand. That's separate from the geo bond that can't be used for, yeah, correct.
It's like our bond waiting for, earmarking.
That's just earmarked for parks, what was that one double summer?
Um, the Heartland Heights, um, park money, uh, and some other, I, I would have to research that, I know.
But we borrowed it and then we just didn't spend that much due outside the park?
Well, or bits, king and less, or whatever.
Did we get our, did we get our, uh, grant?
Yes, we have gotten the grant money, yeah. So part of seventy-five thousand of that is the grant money because we had previously purchased the property, you know, and haven't gotten that back yet.
How much did you say it was?
Hundred and eighty-seven. But that would have to be spent in terms of parks.
Yeah.
What was the other bond?
Three eleven, six sixty-four is the bond money, three forty-five, three forty-six is lost.
So total amount for the water, sewer water to get, to totally fund that, so you, what I was mentioning, the negative, how much total to get? If we borrow took some.
You're talking about those negative balances?
I mean.
You, you wanna do that in user fees, cause that, that's to pay back other bonds, you don't wanna borrow to make your payments. You, um, that would be the, the debt service fees in water and sewer that it's on everybody's bill.
Did you mean you borrow, Tom, or did you mean borrow from this excess?
Yeah, borrowing from the ex, I mean, we've both talked every year about how do we not increase fees and, and there's something we could use for lost or the bonds?
Well, it's legal to use the lost money for that, but it's not recommended. The state wants, if you've got proprietary water and sewer, they want the user fees to cover the costs.
Every year we talk about raising. I'm not saying to make a practice of it, but it's a thought, I guess.
Just some input from me, the thing about user fees, if you don't raise it, eventually you're gonna have to, and if you don't take a moderate yearly annual increase in user fees, all of a sudden, you have this huge increase, and that's when your taxpayers have a feeling. They don't mind having a one and a half, two percent, two and a half percent increase each year, but if all of a sudden there's a six percent increase over one year, that's a big issue.
We, we did that.
Yeah, how that worked?
It didn't work that well.
Yeah.
We could have paying so that we wouldn't have to raise those of water.
Yeah.
Garbage, it was like ten cents.
And garbage, and then it got to be a horrible deal.
Well, we already know we're gonna have a big one because of the new wells and the water treatments, that's the hard part.
But the, Tom's point, if there's something that's a one-time fee, that's where you're fucking at. Or a one-time expense, albeit a bid, but looking under areas rather than raising rates.
Well, SRF will make you raise the rates so that you have the right net revenue. Or you won't have an SRF loan. The only reason that you've gotten away with not raising the water debt fee before is because you've had enough net revenues from the regular rates. Um, and now you've only got twenty-one thousand now, so you don't have that coverage. Even if you have the money on hand, they want net new revenue of a hundred and, a hundred and ten percent of whatever the payment is.
Seems kind of crazy.
The bond requirement.
Been out of compliance with that for a while.
Well, we've gotten away with it because the regular one, you know, when we just look at the debt fee, we haven't had the coverage, but because the regular rates had enough cushion, we, we were technically in compliance. When I first started here, we were not in compliance with the sewer.
So what do you need from counsel tonight?
Well, I guess are we still supposed to work the CIP projects that I mentioned in, or do you wanna pull Church Street, or do you wanna pull something else? That's kind of the, the first question, and then do you want to be the ones deciding what comes out of lost and what comes out of where, or do you want us to come up with a recommendation for your next meeting?
As far as the Church Street and Vanderbilt Street, part of that's the sewer, we gotta do any of it, correct?
Right, but Shane said you could move that to the, the water treatment SRF.
Okay.
And not on a geo.
The sewer planning on it?
Yeah, the sewer part of it.
Which, SRF or no interest, right?
Oh, there, it just.
Right, but the construction.
Okay.
Sounds like they wanna remove the Anglo Road Culver.
I didn't hear that, you didn't hear that?
No.
I mean, from what Shane said last, reading that Lynn's been, Lynn County's been asking for a while and given what the industrial area down there and have to work with Lynn County, it's like.
Well, and really, it's only fifty thousand, you could take that from the bond money or loss fairly easily. It would be an, an easy one to shift where some of the bigger ones are not.
About people in county are good thing? Yeah.
So keep Lynn County, keep both of the parks things that are on here, because we have that money, they can only be spent for parks?
And that covered.
Right, almost exactly.
Does that?
We have one eighty-seven and there's one eighty.
One eighty-seven's only for parks might be demolished, but only for new things, not something that's.
It's bond money for parks, so it has to be used in a park, park improvement. So the hundred eighty-seven thousand can only be spent on parks, and Joe has hundred eighty-five. So we might as well do that. Right?
I think so.
Those are my one net new things. That one, yours.
What's that?
The two items, the pavilion, I can't find the word, pavilion and the bathrooms are the only two net new things for this year, although it was a bigger.
Yeah, I think his other number one priority was restrooms at Prairie Creek.
Yeah.
Right?
That's right.
Which would be probably another hundred and thirty-five, so.
And that one eighty-seven can't be stored at the portal loop bridge?
No.
I don't think.
It's not a park.
Trail, trail.
I'd have to go back and, I, I'm sure it says park improvements, but I, I'd have to see if trail was mentioned in the bond.
It seems like the one eighty-seven, the pavilion was out, the, the one eighty-five, that's a simple.
Yeah, the man.
So let's just start at the top, the intersection one, that, I mean, I think you're committed to that because you're committed to the bridge, right?
Right.
So that's an okay one. The next one is the additional amount needed for the well. That's gonna be SRF, and compared to the cost of the project, I mean, we have the five hundred and fifteen thousand up planning, but we have lots of the money on hand with our ARCA, Henley County's ARCA, so that's, I think, a good deal to only borrow another three hundred and sixteen. Church Street. Total project costs twenty-two million, eight hundred and fifty-four thousand.
It's way here the next couple of years.
Now, now with those big projects.
Pulling the best sewer planning on.
Or, sorry, on the SRF? And that six hundred thousand, Shane, that must have been through both years. Right?
Were you in Church Street?
Yeah, cause you only had five hundred and ten for this year. Because you only had five hundred and ten for this year.
Yeah, yeah, the six hundred.
Is total for this.
We had a hundred and twenty already set aside and then we had additional design themes of thirty and. And construction is just like ten percent of next years.
So that's what's Church Street down the road in a number of years, you know, on quite a ways.
That's two years, yeah.
Eagle View Drive Water. Does that need to be done with the intersection? I forget what that is.
That's with the uh, Eagle View and one one cemetery.
That's heading north of Eagle View.
Right, so that's needs to be done at the time of the.
Yeah, it does a hamper be done, but now a good time to do it.
So that's a yes?
I can say.
Water supply treatment. SRF, yes, with the added sewer. Culver. Yeah, that was a yes, right? Uh, sewer hundred ninety. And then the Heartland Heights participations.
And can you just confirm that the one eighty-seven can't be counted for a trail?
Yeah. But I mean, we're already committing a hun- hundred and eighty-five of it. It'd be two thousand left.
So what was the purpose of the other bond?
The revenue?
Yeah.
No, not the revenue. The one I had up here and just read. Planning, designing, construction, street, sanitary sewer system, stormwater drainage system, water utility system. Pedestrian trails, sidewalk improvements. Um, street lighting and signalization.
Good reports of sewer.
Right.
Yes.
So are the Heartland Heights participations yeses?
Shane, last meeting, we talked about. What the city wouldn't have to participate in that area and what. Uh, Schrader doesn't have to. Does that, does that fall into play with this? So the only, the only kind of broke down for for you was the uh, that box holder that. That Shane had requested participation on. And that got pulled out. This is the bridge and the trail. And the trail is, you know. How far you want to go. If we get it just over where that box holder has to go in, there's an east-west grid. If you take the. Trail just over that, then the city will have access to the entire property that that we accepted this on. So if we could save, I I'd have to double check. I think it's forty to fifty thousand on the trail. If we, you know, just got it north of that. Frick. Then, you know, Shane drew step that culvert in.
Because it doesn't really go on. The only reason we would finish the trail is so the guys have access to get back there. That's it. There's, it's not gonna get developed or built or there's not gonna be anything back there. For a long time, so it's kind of wasted money.
So do it just to the, on the other side of the culvert and then stop which saves.
And then you could finish the other side of the trail when they develop that area whenever that happens.
Wait, that's the whole gets extended, which would be they'd have to put in a double box holder, whatever.
Let's do that.
Look at these. So the transfer people walk on, not necessarily anything to do with development on the other side.
Ultimately, Beverly stops east of the creek and just east of that pond. Ultimately, when they develop further to the west, they'll have to extend Beverly over that creek on the north side of the pond. So they put in a double box holder property. There's some costs there and then that trail would tie into the sidewalk and the trail along Beverly. There's a, there was a trail on the north side of Beverly. But ultimately tie into that and that would be the connectivity. Um, so it wouldn't just dead end. I mean, the Joe term development would be when they develop that area and extend Beverly's relevant.
So we can't really finish the trail all the way because of Beverly.
I I wasn't sure what we're saying as far as like not to do.
Yeah.
Whatever.
So we would just come over across the bridge and we go up to where this culvert is because they need to put the culvert in.
But your phone died.
And then we'd be dead.
Was that the eventually?
Eventually, and when we get, when they get to that point that we have to um, run Beverly up and develop that.
Was that the red line from your maps?
We talked about it, yeah.
Because you have the bridge and then further around kind of corner, it'll be another culvert. For him, like we talked about, just stop in there, you know, just so that make these guys have access to that side.
It's so, are those last two yeses?
Yes, on the bridge and um, he's going to pull out part of the trail for that one ninety-one would be more like one fifty.
Somewhere in there.
Somewhere in there.
You can start with your can in the trail. There's a parent people over there. Those little things who have the end of short, you can still mow up further. So it would be a grass walkway instead of a tape walkway.
And then do you want to cover the rest of the steel coat, the sweeping and the painting from rug use? What did I say, thirty-seven? Five, I think. That was shortened when you spelled. Yeah, that's why I'm trying to get it away from. That's why I'm trying to shift it. Not in a bond in the uh, shift it to loss. Everybody okay with that?
Yeah, if you've got money to do that.
And then. Lynn will go through it and Lynn and I'll go through it and see what else we can pull out and see if we can get it.
And again, we have a a balance, so I mean, for one year you could dig into that. We just can't continue to do that year after year.
Well, that in the budget, is that Rhine maker in the budget?
Did we, no, we threw that.
Okay.
I mean, I've got a line for it, but that's not with that number in there at all.
There was a, and this is why your original thought was this might have been the year. To do it, but.
So if you know their bond, can you do the point replacement and post, uh, trail, isn't there to use part of that for the Heartland Trail?
Yeah.
This portion of it?
Yeah.
So looking down the road Cynthia, with these questions answered at least. Almost completely. At the March fifth meeting, that'll be the final discussion on budget because then the budget.
Yeah, so on your March fifth meeting. Um, I'll have that money allocated, know for sure how much um, Shane will revise that one number. How much for sure we need to bond for. And um. You could still make changes, but after that, then we have to publish in the newspaper our budget hearing, okay? So really in April, you're gonna say yes or no to what you end in March fifth with. Because once you publish it, you can lower it, but uh, you can't raise any expenses. And um. Now, keep in mind, this is all just an estimate, so come July one, you can do a budget amendment.
And fix that.
And fix it if, you know, if something unexpected happens or you change your mind on something um. The only thing you can't change is taxes. Come after April. And I assume everybody still wants to try to stay at the eight-ten.
Yes. Isn't that what?
Yeah, that's what we proposed in the levy last night.
I think at some point we'll probably have to change that eventually just because we have so many expenses, you know. Once we can hang in there, I guess.
So for the March fifth meeting, I'll figure out the bond, figure out these other funds. Do you want me to make some recommendations to garbage fee and water and sewer?
Yeah.
Debt service fees.
See where we stand on them.
Or whether we can throw glass recycling in there.
Oh, yeah.
That wasn't very expensive, that wasn't.
No. And, you know, I'll look at regular rates also for water. We have not raised those for quite a while. All we've been raising every year is the garbage or tweaking the debt service. You know, so I'll. I know your spreadsheet says the last time we raised them, let's just speak real quick, sorry. Um, water.
It goes like seventeen or eighteen.
Twenty-one. Well, that we just changed the water debt fee. Yeah, so.
Service fee, I think it looked like it's seventeen.
Right, so you know, is that realistic? No. So.
We need more new water users, either a new industrial water user or lots of more houses. To improve our situation.
So I did not intend to go through this line by line. Hopefully, nobody wants to do that. Um, kind of the things I've highlighted. Um. Our CIP projects and just different notes. If you take a home look through it and you have got some questions. Feel free to shoot me an email before May or March fifth, you don't have to wait. Um, I do have the other stacking changes penciled in. Um, with the cost being split between road use, general government, water and sewer. That the topic that was discussed with Ely and Mount Vernon.
See, I'm sorry, sorry.
Well, I don't want, I'm not supposed to use the word.
Why I just brought it, I didn't make sense something.
The administrator position, I've got penciled in in the numbers in in road view um. So it's in road views, which is probably fourteen, I don't know if I know. On page twelve. And then, and that's just a fourth. And then in general government.
So what's it, it's labeled what?
Staff changes, that's what I told them. And then general government, it is on page nineteen. And then in the water and sewer, it's just in, it doesn't have separate lines. It's just in with the payroll um, projections.
So.
But it's the same amount in water.
If you have a a budget amendment. Next fiscal year and you go from eighty to one to one, you guys please the report here somewhere else.
You mean to for?
Yeah, you don't have to spend it, but you can add it.
But you'd have to take from another department whatever to get to the one twenty, right?
For a higher wage, yeah.
Right.
Um, or I could adjust it now. We could see what other adjustments we could make in those funds if you want.
So the other, the other unknown thing would be if Cynthia retires, at what level do you?
The clerk.
The clerk position.
Or.
Because right now we're here.
Right.
Where would that, you don't know what kind of person's gonna apply, so you don't know if it'll be here, here or here. So you don't know what those, where that payroll ended up.
Yeah.
And you put yours in for the whole year, right? The whole fiscal.
What? I put mine in for the whole fiscal year, yeah. So that there would be savings there if I don't stay till a year in.
Are you volunteering? Is that what you're saying?
No, I'm not.
I would never say he is. Think you gotta go higher just so if you got a number in there. Especially with those two gentlemen we're talking about and.
Do you want me to take it to a hundred and then knowing that you might have some wiggle room in other? In my salary, engineering.
You know, the lower the better, but a quality you can't pay for.
That's gonna sell papers and all that stuff, right?
Oh, that's already all in there.
That's part of that. Eighty or no?
No. But I've got the lines for all the benefits. It's got a separate line. Yeah. Yeah, if you look on, what did I say, page twelve? Yeah, so that gives you the breakdown of. Um, salary, um. Cell phone, other benefits, some of the cities, you know, said that they supply a car or mileage. And then FICA Irish insurance, uniform training. And that twenty-eight, one seventy-four is in four different funds for that. So I could raise that twenty. If you want.
Trees, too many of them.
You want me to pencil in a hundred thousand on that top line?
I think if you want to be realistic with the budget, I think it's rough to shift.
Okay.
Figure a hundred thousand, I would move it up.
Yeah.
When you nine go down.
Yeah. I I would pencil that in to see what it does to balance and see what adjustments we need. Other questions? Reminder, I will not be here at March eighth.
March fifth or twenty-sixth?
That fifth, I'll be in the other one, yeah.
Is that the two meetings, fifth and twenty-sixth? Is there another one there?
Fifth and then two of them on the twenty-sixth.
Right, okay.
Anything else we need on the budget Cynthia? They still got a ways to go.
Yeah, it's certainly not in its final form, but I think I had the answers that I needed to go on, keep going. All right, and again, I stress, look it over, let me know if you have questions.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to item number thirty-four. Discussion regarding scheduled city council meetings. Dan asked that this be placed on the agenda and include some information. And Lynn, I'll put that.
Yeah, so obviously my uh, first meeting was a fun five-hour one. Um, which I understand we're talking about budget, so it's. So I'm just curious, like, well, what's what's the teens of public cities? You know, one's our side, clearly Cedar Rapids is is bigger, but. You know, I was actually attending a lot of these and then. You know, being on the councils, we we have a similar number of topics. Our dollar amounts might be smaller. But we get a similar number of topics to some other cities, so I'd like, you know, Swisher, um, I know Hyatt's a little bigger, but. Swisher, for instance, they have two meetings a month. Um, so does Ely, two meetings a month, so. That's where I was thinking we. Potentially could up the quantity of of meetings that we have, not only so we're not here forever. But as the meeting gets towards the end, we're getting tired, we don't want to talk as long about things. Um, I know the budget came up today, I think we started talking about like nine fifteen, but we didn't talk about the website really at all, which. Could have gotten a conversation, Mike's not here, but. You know, is the new normal with one meeting a week? Or four and a half hours versus splitting it up among. Making these a little more digestible for time.
I did just a a quick tally based off of Dan's request. I looked over our our last six months worth of city council meetings just to see what the time, because we show that in the minutes, what time we adjourn. Um, over the last six months, including January, we averaged three hours in length. The shortest meeting that we had was an hour and a half. The longest that we had was January at five hours. And we're over four hours tonight, so our average is gonna go up.
This time of year, we're heavy all the time. I'd say we usually average about eight thirty, eight twenty-five.
Doing somewhere.
So anyway, just wanted to share. That information. At least we got out of here in that. Six months was, like I said, an hour and a half, seven thirty. But we had a ten o'clock, we had a nine o'clock, two-nine, one-nine and thirty.
So the one thing is, is if you do that, then you have to have the money for it in the budget because you have to pay everyone to show up double.
Yes, yeah, council pay and you have to pay department heads, you have double publications, you have.
Yeah, so there's money associated with that. So we might have to budget for that if it's something you want to do.
Well, and. You may not like this, but if if you are still entertaining the possibility of staff changes. You know, maybe let that play out and see if that helps, you know. The the things are.
The meetings be so long.
Yeah, you know, that staff is taking care of things or directing things or, you know, h- helping it. ha- helping it go faster. Um, I, I don't know for sure if it would, but.
Just pretending that there is a city administrator, they're going after all these grants, that's potentially going to add things to this. Really, we need longer.
The other thing to consider is how you structure the meetings. I'm going to read from Eli's website. They offer two meetings. The first meeting of the month will be reserved for in-depth council discussions on upcoming actionable items, as well as updates and presentations from various city departments. The second meeting in the month is reserved for action agenda items only. So all staff doesn't necessarily have to attend both meetings. Your department inputted some one meeting, at least in Eli, that's how they structure it. Well, just about. So this was a discussion only topic, anything else we want to talk about on that?
Yeah. Budgeting is the big key, I guess, to go with that. I mean, I, that, that five hour meeting was a, that's a rare one.
We're done discussing for tonight? We've been here too long and.
Well, and, and maybe even, you know, so we went to written department reports so that, you know, we're not all up at the mic yakking on, um, you know, and maybe just being more cognizant of discuss it, get it out, make a decision, move on, you know? Cause we do a lot of silence. So anyway, some of that might be able to help.
Need someone to push us along.
I'll get her a whip, I'm trying.
All right, so to be continued, potentially, we'll, we'll see. Let's move on to claims for tonight. Consider a motion to approve a claim if you had a chance to look at them.
So I have a question of Monticello Parks and Rec tournament, the, what's that?
That's our tournament uh, teams. They are scheduled for uh, three tournaments in May, uh, late April, early May. And that's the registration fee for those teams. Danny, you look like you have a follow-up question.
I'm, it's okay, I'll, I'll do some thinking.
Their registration fee paid for those terms.
Right.
Sorry, we're paying upfront and then?
Correct. You know, the, the uh, all of the, the Puts and Rec, that, you know, we, we're on a calendar year, not a fiscal year like the city is. So our season starts in April or May and doesn't get done until September, October. So we, like I said, it's a calendar year. Those girls will pay their registration fee, that's a fall ball tournament that goes uh, through the end of the year and then into the spring. And they pay their registration fee in the fall and their registration fees will cover this.
Okay, so this is the cost of revenue set in that one?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah.
Any other questions on the claims list? And now consider a motion to approve?
All closing. Second.
All in favor?
Aye, aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Moving on to thirty six. Opportunity for citizens not on the agenda.
No, we quit.
Looks like we have one. All right, thank you for their fitness.
Uh, Tom Art, uh, by eleven, like Seventy Road. Thank you, Mayor Beer, for a couple of minutes here. Uh, as a side note, I should appreciate a little thoughts of possibly doing some budget cutting. It's kind of good to hear from, from my standards, that's kind of another word now and then. And uh, I just have a few comments for the council members and I might throw this in, I didn't have this down. This may not pertain to all you council members, but I have to say, it's kind of issue what's, it's worth. On December twelfth, two thousand twenty-three, this council spearheaded by Mike Bailey and Tom Nern, thought it was important to present to the people of Fairfax, what the city had done with construction projects to the art property and take Tom Art in dollars and cents over the course of the last several years. First, it sure seems like a waste of taxpayers' dollars, digging up thirty years plus of pictures and payments to the arts that have already public knowledge. Well, for one thing, I'll tell you, all this, my parents went out, we are not as naive as you might think. This entire plan was designed to embarrass the arts, Tom Art in particular. During your witch hunt to accomplish this, which totally backfired, by the way, what possessed you council to publicly post that since the nineteen sixties, I, Tom Art, purchased most or all of the business buildings and farmland that encompasses twenty-five East Cemetery of Ulricha San Barbara? Now remember, Tom Nern read this word for word at the December twelfth meetings. Since then, I and my mom have taken most recent Lynn County accessories tax rolls to Mayor Beer of the property you publicly accused me of owning. It clearly shows I own absolutely zero percent of the buildings or farmland at twenty-five East Cemetery Road. And never did. Where did you get your information council and how embarrassing to all of you at the taxpayers' expense? How would any one of you sitting here, like if I posted publicly that you own business or farm, farmland that you absolutely not own? Then try explaining this to other family members and friends, that was what they read. All of you would request a very thorough apology credited in the Fairfax facts. This is when my apparent, me and my parents are expected. On side note, for your information, I and my wife did not sell our property to the city for the trail because we had to or wanted the money. We did it because we knew many residents would utilize it to much enjoyment. If you want to make such a deal about the payments the city paid us over the last several years for easements and land purchases, I got an offer for you. I'd gladly pay you back the entire amount and all the monies the city paid us and you get everything off the property we once owned. Finally, all you should be ashamed for putting my elderly parents through such a false ordeal. My brothers and sisters caught wind of this and their accusations as far as Pat and I owning property that they thought someday would be part theirs. Please only publicize facts from here on out. Amen. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom.
I'll give you some hard coffee to do on.
All right, let's move on um, to mayor's comments. You have two things in your packet. Um, on March twenty-sixth, we are going to have a city volunteer board and commissions meet and greets. Um, something new that we're going to try, appreciation for our city board volunteers. Um, so invited our board of adjustment members, library board trustees, parks and notification boards and committees and the planning and zoning commission. Um, it will be held following the two short city council meetings on March twenty-sixth. So everyone will be already here, so um, council is invited to stay and um, meet and greet with these volunteers. So six thirties are projected start time for that, we'll have um, refreshments. Uh, the chairperson of each of these volunteer groups will just do very brief introduction as to what their group does for the city and also introduce the members. And the public will also be invited, we'll put a, an advertisement in the March fax inviting anyone from the public, if you like, to attend. So I think it's a good opportunity to interaction, interact with these various boards that you may not have met the members before and for them to meet each other and exchange information, but nothing really formal, just a meet. So um, the other thing that's in the packet, Chris is gone, but um, we did meet with Cedar Rapids, it's a preliminary discussion regarding uh, future boundary or annexation agreement, whatever you would like to call it. It went fairly smoothly. Um, appears the only point of possible contention would be at the north end. The south end seems to be everybody's in agreement. Um, we have another meeting scheduled for February twenty-third. Um, they're looking into some additional information for us. We'll keep in touch with that and as it proceeds, um, if there needs to be a city council representative, we'll reduce that, we want to kind of tread lightly to start with. And um, we'll see where we go from there. So, so far, so good. We'll keep in touch. That's all I had on that. Cynthia, did you have any additional comment?
No. I need a motion for adjournment, please. Both in.
Second.
Becca, all in favor?
Aye, aye.
Thank you, everyone.
Yeah. Is your best, you know, to put the hair up.
Yeah.
Okay.
I have a lot of email addresses.
You shouldn't have turned this down like a consultant and stuff.
I didn't want.